Mr. Mayor, Council, as I was explaining, the Department of Plan and Development Services maintains the sex offender exclusion map and, as directed by code, regularly updates it as new information and new locations come online. So this map was previously adopted on December 2nd, 2024. So it's been about, you know, six months or so and this map reflects three new features. One is adding the Avondale Phase One Amenities Center, which includes a pool and is a place where children would commonly gather. It adds Wood Creek Phase 6L, which is a new development that has come online and adds new residential parcels within it. And then there's just some basic changes to the map symbology, meaning the line thicknesses and just making it a little bit more reader, you know, easy to read and understand. So that's basically all the map reflects. It doesn't reflect any changes in policy. There are no changes in policy included in this. This is simply This is simply a reflection of our current policy and an updated kind of geographic condition. So any questions y'all have, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Have we had any more people apply for exemptions since the last, I guess it was maybe two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago?
That's a question for our chief.
So we don't do exemptions anymore.
Okay.
By the way that we wrote the ordinance that took any exemptions out, it comes to me, and we did not provide that.
Okay.
And so we have had a person recently, but we've corrected the problem and because he was told that there are no exceptions.
Love that. My other question was, is there going to, do we know if there's anybody who is getting grandfathered in based on these new locations that are currently registered as sex offenders?
Not on the, on this current, there's nothing because these are all new homes and things like that.
Sure.
So there's really nothing. The only time we would have anything, the grandfather from this point on is if we annexed and we know how that goes.
Sure. Okay. All right, thank you. That's all.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just, I was the one that pulled this from the, from the agenda, just for the sheer fact that we've had it come up before, and I just wanted to make sure people understood we were actually adding more area rather than changing or removing anything. So we were making the city safer in the long run. So I appreciate that, Ryan. Thank you.
Good deal. Okay, any other discussion on this agenda item? Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we pass resolution number R dash two zero two five dash three oh, dash zero three seven, sorry.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We can begin voting. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, guys. All right, next item, please.
Next will be agenda item six A, which is discuss, consider and take any necessary action regarding resolution number R twenty twenty five dash zero three eight approving the engagement of Harper Smith and Associates for the construction of a sport field at Joe Burger Park.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we're also, Snapper Carr is here from Focused Advocacy, so we could wait if you like, or we could go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Can we finish this one, or if you're cool with that, yeah, we'll finish six A and then we'll, we'll put you in. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Martin. I'm the community service coordinator here. I'm here to talk about the Joe Burger Sports Field. We purchased this property in 2018 from the school district to build a master plan park on the south side of the city. In 2019, we had Park Hill design a master park. The total build out for the entire park would be about six million. We passed a bond for the phase one of the park in 2020 for 3.25 million, and we completed that phase one in October of 2022. The master plan has two sports courts, the sports fields, the park. It has a community garden in it, and then, of course, all the paths that go through. And then right here, I have the phase one of the plan, which I'm sure everybody's been over there. It is the pickleball court, the basketball courts, the playground. We added seating area, bathrooms, and of course, the shade structure over that seating So the proposed sports court was part, the sports field was part of the original master plan, and as you can see on this, it is over to the right of the bathrooms. So we would pay for this with the remaining bond money that we had left over from 2020 and part of our park fees. Is there any questions on this?
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council?
I have a couple.
Okay.
All right. Looking at the park now, there's quite a bit of space that does not have grass, that's pretty muddy, just how much of this is going to fill in that?
So it's an acre and a half. It'll be to the right of the bathrooms, like when you're looking at the park, it'll be to the right. So it'll be that whole side will have a large field that we'll use for partnership with the YMCA. Right now, we have the little kids out there playing soccer on the weekends, and so this will let us be able to do the older kids and have football as well out there.
Okay.
So it'll be the whole right side of the.
But we're going to fill in with actual grass between the sidewalks and the field itself? It's not going to be just mud to get to the field?
Right.
Okay, all right. And then the other question I had was, who's going to maintain this field, field going forward?
Our people will maintain it. So the part of this is the, it'll have irrigation, but our people will mow and keep the lines and all of that.
Okay.
The facilities team.
And the goalposts, is this thing going to have soccer goals or is it going to have football goal?
It's going to have, in theory, it will have both. So we'll have the removal, the soccer, it'll depend what season it is. So we'll have the soccer when the YMCA is out, we'll keep those goals out, and then we'll have where they can bring in their own stuff for football.
Okay, and last question. Who's doing the scheduling for teams to play on that field?
It will probably be our department. So the YMCA, of course, our partnership with them, will get first pick, and then after that, we'll schedule it during the week, just like we do the pavilions, and we schedule Robert Smith and Malters.
Okay, and when you say partnership, what is the YMCA giving us?
They are bringing sports to faith, so you don't have to drive to Rockwall if your kids play soccer or football.
But are we getting any money for that, like?
No, no, it's just to bring programming to the city.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay, turn your mic on.
The quote doesn't seem to refer to goalposts. How are those?
To the goals and stuff like that. It'll come out of our parks fund. So once it's completed, then we'll purchase whatever we need to, to go in there.
Okay, I've never built a football field, but they don't seem like an insignificant cost.
So we probably won't put the football goals in, we'll probably just buy soccer goals, and then the football teams can bring in their own equipment.
Okay, and I was, this is three hundred sixty two thousand three hundred and fifty five. How much is left in the bond money?
And that is two hundred and forty five thousand two twenty four.
Two forty five, two twenty four?
Mm-hmm.
So about a hundred and twenty is going to have to come from fees. So how, how are the fees coming in? Are they?
So when you build a house in all the different neighborhoods, they pay park fees, and that comes in depending on where you live, it's different amounts. So it will come from the park fee C, and then we also have a community budget that we can pull from as well.
Okay.
It's all from those park fees.
So that's Fund seven fourteen in the financial report, and so there's a, let's see, we started the year with four hundred and ninety thousand. We've had eleven thousand five hundred in revenues and expended two hundred and thirty thousand, so we've got two hundred and seventy one thousand left.
And that's on top of the bond money that's left?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's enough to pay for this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, do I have a motion for item six A?
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number R twenty twenty five zero thirty eight.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, motion and second, and please vote. All right, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, next item, please. We're going, oh, go ahead.
Yes, sir. We will move back to agenda item three B for the legislative update.
Perfect, thank you.
Snapper Carr is here. He's our legislative liaison with Focused Advocacy, and he's going to give us a presentation on the legislative session. Good to have you here, Snapper.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank y'all. And will we have the presentation loaded on?
Thank you. Yes, let's get it over to you.
Thank you. Perfect. Mayor, Council, Mr. Mayor, thank y'all for having me, and my name is Snapper Carr. I'm partner in general counsel with Focused Advocacy. On behalf of my business partners and our associates at Focused Advocacy, thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight, to visit with you about the recently wrapped up eighty ninth of Texas Legislative Session, and the opportunity to work with your, your community and your city over the years. We've greatly been honored by our work with you all, and would like to now share with you a little bit about what's been going on down in Austin. It has not been for lack of activity down there. We've, we've had a lot going on, especially on behalf of cities. Just a little bit about us, this is our team, my business partners, Brandon Agamillion and Curtis Sidletz. Kurt was actually a state legislator from up in the North Texas area, Grayson County, Collin County area for a number of years. Brandon and I both have worked at the Capitol for a number, in and around the legislative process now for a number of decades, and have worked primarily on city issues. Lindley Hird's our legislative counsel, she's our newest member coming over from the Capitol and focuses a lot on utility and water and other municipal related issues as well. Of course, you can't have a legislative update without kind of discussing your own delegation, and you, of course, had a new member and a senior member to kind of round out yours with Senator Hall. As you'll see, he's the Chair of the Senate Administration, which is an important committee for operations in the Senate. They also get bills referred to that committee unlike in the House. And then he's on finance, human services, state affairs, and veteran affairs, all very significant committees and a big workload. Representative Pearson was appointed in her freshman cycle to the Homeland Security and Public Safety Committee, the Public Health, and then a subcommittee on Disease Prevention and Women and Children's Health Initiatives that was newly created. All those committees get quite a few bills, Public Health and Homeland Security get a lot of bills referred to them, so she had a busy agenda as well. She wasn't on, certainly we get public safety issues that go through, but she wasn't on some of the committees that the majority of the legislation that we talked about in terms of cities, whether that be with land use, some of the utility related items, those went to other committees that she didn't serve on. It's not to say that she wasn't involved, but just to give y'all a little bit of a flavor of some of the issues, and some of the land use authority issues in particular that y'all had the most input on and were most active in, she just didn't happen to serve on those committees. The partisan breakdown, I wanted to just remind everybody, this is the way those numbers looked in the Senate. These are still the case. We had a very large thirty one freshman member house, y'all was a new member in that, and they made themselves known. I mean, that's a significant sized class just by comparison, that's, they're not typically that large of a freshman entering class, and they were all very active members and some, obviously some very talented members that are going to, I think, be around the process for a long time. Had a decent number of freshman senators there as well, starting off the Senate. Wanted to spend a little bit of time to really go over the numbers with y'all about local government, the number of bills, because it really does tell the story of kind of why I think you all engage, why cities and local governments really are out of duty to be engaged at some level. There were eight thousand seven hundred and nineteen Senate and House bills filed. When you add in proposed joint resolutions or constitutional amendments, that number goes to over nine thousand bills. That's by far and away a record. It's the most bills ever filed in the Texas Legislature, period. A substantial increase over the prior record that was at around a hundred, I believe. Of that, over twenty, we tracked over twenty five hundred bills that directly impact city-related operations in some way, good, bad, or indifferent. Unfortunately, a lot had some, what we viewed as some potentially negative consequences, or at least substantial consequences, let's say, since that's kind of in the eye of the beholder if it's good or bad at times, right? So, but nonetheless, a very substantial amount. Just to give context of that, that is the, the highest bill track out of any public or private entities in the state without a close second. So said another way, almost a third of the things filed directly affect, that are proposed, cities. That is the largest number of items that are proposed that affect any entities. Just by, again, comparison, let's take a privately owned electric utility company that does business in the state, they may track a couple of hundred bills, not thousands. And so obviously, that just gives you an idea of the scope. If we go down, there were twelve, twelve hundred and thirteen bills passed. That also was a percentage number, and by raw numbers, a record low number of bill passages. So we had the highest number filed, lowest percentage and raw number passage, some interesting fact. Of that, almost a quarter of the bills directly impacted cities. So two hundred and eighty nine bills out of that track passed that will have a direct impact on, on cities and local governments in this state in some way. And that one quarter number is also the highest. That means cities were more impacted by the legislature than any other entity, public or private, and that is borne out by these bills and those numbers, not just a, they filed a lot of stuff that affected you. It's, it's actually what they're passing and what we're dealing with is local government. And really, as we go through this, and I'm not going to go through every bill that we have on here, some of this is informational for y'all, because it would take quite a while to go through this list, certainly to go through all two hundred and thirty five bills. But one thing to kind of think about, when the legislature does meet, and when we're in session and we're talking about these, everything that you all do is, is in essence, subject to a statute. The way you called this meeting, the way you run this meeting, the way you adopt your budget, the words you use to adopt your budget, all those things are laid out in a statute somewhere. So when the legislature meets, every single item and function that this city does, there's a basis in a statute, and those statutes are up for debate every other year during the session. That's kind of what these numbers bear out for you. Going into session, the governor staked out these priorities, and most of these, if not all, were emergency items that he deemed the legislature. He passed a substantial bill in all of these. So he batted a thousand for his security, or his emergency designated items that he designated back in, in February of this year. These were the Lieutenant Governor's Top Forty, he named forty. Some of these have overlap with others, and certainly Senate Bill Two, which was the educational savings accounts or voucher related bill for public ed, which really dominated the interim in this session, of course. That passed already signed into law by the governor. You can see a bill there banning THC, still being debated very hotly, topic about the governor, and speaking of, the governor has until June twenty second at midnight to either veto, allow bills to become law without his signature. There are no pocket vetoes in Texas, so if he doesn't sign it, it still becomes law, it's just filed without his signature, and there will be some of those. You will see that there are substantial items, the increasing the homestead exemption, and by the way, there's a typo there, that's two hundred thousand for seniors in SB four. And again, these are constitutional items that'll have to be approved in November. At the back of this presentation, just included what that language will look like on the ballot, but the property tax package all has to be ratified come November, just like the last time around. Again, you will see that as we go through this list, Senate Bill Six, grid reliability, pretty much go down any of these items, including this next list, which established, again, all the way to SB forty. The Lieutenant Governor probably had one of the most successful sessions of any statewide elected official that I've seen in my career, been working around for, for over three decades now. He passed a tremendous, I mean, he set those forward and. a tremendous, I mean, he set those forward and then proceeded to pass them. And most of them are being signed into law in some form or fashion, even if they're not these. So, very successful session for the Lieutenant Governor and his agenda. Speaker Burrows, which there was, we go back to the February timeframe, there was a great deal of discussion about the election of Speaker Burrows. That certainly affected the session throughout. He appointed all new committee chairs, all new kind of leaders and lieutenants in his team after he was elected. He then staked out these items. One item out of the speakers that I would note, and if you go down to both HB 19, and then if I flip to this next page, HB 23, there's a handful of other bills in here that dealt with local governments, both your ability to issue debt and the way you could issue debt or what you couldn't issue debt on. HB 19 was a hard cap that said you would be limited to 20% a debt to revenue ratio with no ability for the voters to approve anything beyond that, which was a pretty dramatic proposal. And it very nearly came out of committee. It's one that will be back. And I hate to say, that sort of proposal and issuance and dealing with local debt and adoption of local budgets, especially if we had a special session, which we'll get to as we close. But that very well could be something that was debated again. The speaker also laid out, and the governor did too, housing affordability and availability. And I think that's something I'm sure as local officials, y'all have on your mind and deal with locally. What that equated to in the Texas Legislature though, and really started in the interim, was, and I don't have a better way to put this, but an attack by the development community on local government authority permitting processes and review process to say, you all cities are the problem with the amount of time and the cost increases and your regulatory schemes that you have. And they didn't do what was often done in there and say, oh, this is about the city of Austin, or this is about some other community. This was about everybody. And by that, every city, because they applied these across the board to everybody. It really was the package of bills taken in their entirety and what HB 23, which died in Senate Committee after it passed the House, was, was a deregulation of the development process. And it allowed third party review. So in essence, instead of city inspectors and city review, it is the developer and the builders get to select their crew of people. They submit that to communities and it's deemed approved if they've stamped it and said it. Takes the city kind of out of that. And I know that sounds dramatic because it's a big change in the way that we generally have done things, but that is what that bill did. And it was very near passing and it will be back and discussed. And that whole package, and sometimes I think there is a disconnect when we sit through and y'all's certainly activity, I said, was mostly in land use areas this session that y'all became most engaged in and we engaged on y'all's behalf. We're trying to preserve local tools for you all to continue to make those decisions in your community, to have that ability to have input on those decisions. Luckily, a lot of this, in the final days, the final week of session, failed. And they weren't, they weren't in good positions on a lot of these land use items. But they will be back and they're going to be back in a lot of the same proposals that we've seen, which in my experience, the only way we've kind of turned the corner on some of those debates as local governments is for it to be understood by the legislature that y'all are carrying some of these forward on behalf of your community, not just out of some desire to preserve local city council authority, but is to preserve that for community decision making. We've seen that be successful when Airbnb and others went to Austin and tried to preempt city authority on vacation rentals completely and then paired with neighborhoods and other groups coming from around the state. It changed the tenor of that debate and we don't, I think that's what will have to happen if we are to preserve some of our overall authority here. Wanted to spend a little bit of time with that because I will tell you, this session was kind of monumental as it related to that topic of land use authority and the types of proposals that we were seeing proposed. We had, by the way, this was included because this was a very big, last session, the speaker, Phelan and Lieutenant Governor were openly hostile towards one another and their agendas at that time. And we're seeing a much more collaborative between the two leaders of the body and more overlap in the pursuit of what they're seeking to do. Again, a couple of the items, certainly y'all's delegation filed a bill that y'all were, bills that y'all were highly supportive of dealing with MUD reforms, municipal utility district reforms. There were other bills filed in this space that you all were involved in as a city and took public positions on. Those did not pass. There's a heavy lobby in that space with the law firms and other engineering groups and others that represent MUDs that sometimes are hostile to any sort of reform, even ones that make a lot of sense. And so, that's where we saw those bill ends. Again, one of the other guiding principles that in all of the items that y'all took positions on officially were preservation of local authority in that decision making to be made here by y'all's community and not preempted or directed, mandated out of Austin. A little bit on the cutting room floor, as we call it, things that got certainly close. We've already talked about some of those. I won't belabor them, but local preemption and HB 23, that third party review and kind of the privatization of the development review and planning process, got very near passing. That super preemption bill, Senate Bill 2858, that was probably in my work with local governments, one of the more dramatic bills that I've ever seen advance for what it could mean for cities. It passed the Senate. It passed out a committee. It was on the final calendar, on the final day for bill consideration in the Texas House. The bill expanded on the Death Star or Super Preemption Bill from last session that passed and is being challenged as unconstitutional by a coalition of cities. This would have expanded it to include other statutes and say that you all were preempted from doing anything in these statutes. I think it's important to talk about a couple of these two statutes that we're adding because I think it would have been very difficult for your city attorney and others to advise you on what it meant. And that was because it said that you were preempted from dealing with the health and safety code, which a lot of your police powers derive from. And more importantly, it said you were preempted from dealing with the local government code, which is a code that is passed to empower you with local government tools. And so to understand how you might be preempted from using the very tools that were passed by the legislature for you all to use, be a very hard thing to understand. That's one part of it. The probably more egregious part of the super preemption bill though, was that it empowered the Attorney General of the State of Texas upon or anybody, any citizen would have standing to come and file a complaint against a city, City of Fayette, for example, and say that you violated some state law. You're not in compliance with some state law that you're preempted under. And if doing so, the Attorney General at that time, again, on the filing of a complaint, not a finding that you have done something wrong as a city, they would withhold 25% of your sales tax intake citywide. And you'd be limited to an adoption of a tax rate not beyond the no new revenue tax rate, your effective rate. And that would be in place until the Attorney General determined the outcome of that. And that outcome would be binding and unappealable on y'all. And there would be, those penalties would stay in place for a certain time period if you were found to be in violation. Very dramatic bill, very significant. It got described as draconian enforcement mechanisms on that. And so, again, that one was one that was surprising just because of its scope of its impact that it could have. You will see another number of bills here that stopped short of passing that were in essence, preemption of local, various local authority within that space. A number in utilities that we saw, I won't go over all the, I'm sorry, go back to the debt. The issuance of debt and the management of your budget was also, again, another very hot topic that is going to be, some of these were, died in committee after passing the Senate. Some of these have been proposals that have been in other bills. Some of them are new, like this overall debt cap is new. That's never been proposed. That's 20% cap. I think that's the one that we're most likely to see maybe a revisiting if the governor is to call a special session. That sort of overall debt limit would somehow be on the call as well. Again, can't go through all these or we would. There's certainly a big push. There were multiple bills that would have removed, moved all, both bond and municipal elections to November. It would have mandated those. I just listed two of them here. That probably showed up in a dozen different ways throughout the course of session. Again, issues, we'll go back one here with right of way, some pretty dramatic bills that would have shifted costs from the private sector to the public entities to handle the removal and relocation of private infrastructure. It was estimated in House Bill 4272 that it would have been a billion dollars in the first year of public costs that would have been added to projects because of that shift. Luckily, it did not pass. Moving to the property tax relief that did pass, the legislature passed a $51 billion package, again, two, three different joint resolutions that'll be voted on in November, increasing the overall school homestead exemption to 140,000. That's paid for by the state from the current 100. Increasing exemptions for seniors to 200 and also an exemption, an expansion of the tangible personal property, moving that one to 100,000. Again, these are some bills that did pass. There's a thorough write-up that we have in materials. And again, out of the interest of time for y'all, I might hit a couple of these. But some of this is just informational so we can get to the questions to you. There was, again, a large number of items and really the issue of preemption is probably really kind of at the heart of all of our debates lately, whether it's preemption of your budget authority, whether it's preemption of land use or development tools, whether it's preemption of your regulatory powers over something like food trucks or pick the topic, short-term vacation rentals or the others. That's what we're having the debate over is where you draw that line in essence. It's where on all of these items. Land use, like I said, tied in now with housing affordability and availability. All of these are things that pass. Senate Bill 15 is a bill that only applies to the top 16. It got bracketed. Originally, it applied to everyone. And it said you couldn't have minimum lot sizes. And it's in essence preempted cities and vastly changed your tools with regards to mixed use density. This applied, again, statewide as filed. And y'all had, it would have impacted the way y'all have traditionally operated. Let's just say that. And it certainly would have taken away tools for your community to have a voice on certain projects, especially mixed use development projects. And that bill ultimately got bracketed and the bracket moved throughout. And the very end, when this was on the House floor, towards the end of the debate, it got bracketed to where it only applies to the top 16 cities in the state from a population standpoint. That can be revisited at any point. Moves the number, more cities, of course, captured. Senate Bill 840 is one that's garnering a lot of attention. It's still being considered. It's not law yet by the governor. It dramatically changed. And again, this got bracketed to the top 17 cities in the state, but at various times, it applied statewide as well. And it allowed for any multifamily development to go into any area that was residential or any higher classification. It did exclude certain things with industrial, but in essence, it opened up all residential with no restrictions and no other sorts of conditions that had to be put on. And that was obviously a pretty dramatic change. And again, changing the role that the locals and the local community had in saying that. You see that in a lot of the land use items that we have listed here. Senate Bill 924 was a bill that passed that we had some very tremendous changes to it that removed cable franchising to protect existing cable franchise revenues that were threatened under this bill initially. Again, a lot in the public safety space. Again, back to one that I know the city secretary is probably already well aware of, but the House Bill 1522 changed the posting back to the statutes that tell you how to run your meetings. And statute now say you have the three-day posting rule is business days only. And because the irony of this is too good, I have to share this story. If you read the bill analysis of this bill, it says that one of the intent and purposes, they have to have an official statement, is to stop local governments, namely cities, from filing a posting on a Friday to hold a meeting on a Monday. This bill was posted for hearing on a Friday and passed on a Monday without hearing, just to let y'all know some facts. So, you know, they have 140 days, I guess, only. But sometimes it's too, a little much. A great session for water and water infrastructure funding. That's something candidly, if I were to say what was the best thing for local governments and kind of out of the norm with our budget surplus, we had historic funding for direct to local governments on water projects, on airport infrastructure. But certainly, there was over $10 billion in water infrastructure funding and another $10 billion set aside that will be divvied up by the Water Development Board. So, very good session with regards to that. Earlier, when I had my very first post-session council wrap-up, we were able to quote the governor that said, I do not see anything that would require than, or necessitate the need for a special session right now. And I guess I should have focused on that right now. Because as we came in here today, if I were to include quotes from the governor, it would be, we have some unfinished business and we very likely could be back to hold tight, in essence. The things that are being discussed that would cause that, that had publicly been discussed, there is discussion amongst the Texas Congressional delegation about a mid-decade redistricting that would be called. That's not unprecedented in Texas. We've done it before. And that would happen ahead of that. And there's way above my pay grade, but that discussion is occurring and that could be something that would drive it. The governor has also said that these issues with the issuance of debt and local government property tax loads, he had proposed a two-thirds requirement for any property tax increase to be voted on by the public for various entities, including cities, is something that might be considered in a special session or just the issuance of debt. And the ability of local governments to advocate at the Capitol is something that very well could be added as well by that, whether to join associations, whether to be able to use your funds to have positions on staff or to engage with individuals like us. Could very well be back in a special session as well. I know we covered a whole lot just right there. And there was a lot that's left in there. Like I said, we just helped TML complete their wrap-up. So in our newsletter that I know Michael can distribute and TML does as well, there is a summary of all 289 bills that were passed and all two-hundred-and-eighty-nine bills that were passed in, in various aspects of, of it. So, thank y'all for the time, and again, thank you for the opportunity, we appreciate it greatly.
Thank you. Do you have time for a few questions?
Of course.
Okay. So, I'll begin, as far as our, first of all, I have to say, from a, from a standpoint of just breaking down some of these bills, seeing what's passed, what's not, what might pass next time, what got kind of close, that's invaluable, of course, helps to have a, a single location to see that kind of stuff, so we know what's coming. As far as, so, earlier, you had said that, you know, when you guys are engaging on our behalf, and I've, I've looked over our focused advocacy and the, and the scope of services, so representing the city's general interest, what does, what does that engagement look like? And as somebody who's, I would say, for me, who's new to this council, but also anybody watching, what is it that you guys are doing that that's engagement with our representatives and those committees and whatnot?
The easiest way to break down our engagement, and, and again, we're a little unique in that we are municipal kind of subject matter experts on our own, right? We're not just government relations people that know our way around not getting lost at the Capitol. We, we work with cities on city issues. I'm a municipal attorney. And so, that, and that's important because our debates at the Capitol are about minutia of municipal governance, and knowing what those are, again, about all of these things that we just went through. So, when we start, one of the things that we're doing, one is just physically, we're extension of your city staff, we're just contract. You could hire individuals in-house to do this function, and some cities do, and they do a combination of both, but we're in essence, like we said, an, an intergovernmental relations contracting, where your, your staff, we take direction, you know, based on the agenda y'all adopt, and on knowledge that we get from city management, elected officials that are engaged about those areas that are most of concern after we share the bills, and we have that talk ahead of session too, so that we kind of know, and we did, so we know these are the things that y'all, and we issue-spot some of them for y'all too, and say, "Here's some other items that are coming that y'all need to, you know, make sure you're aware of." And that's through a process that is a group process, because it goes back to that list of, there's over, you know, when we add in constitutional amendments, over three thousand pieces of legislation that you track for cities. I couldn't tell you the finer details of all, every single one of those, but I know that kind of the people in the city world that are, that are working on those topics in Austin, and that's some of what we manage too, is that effort collectively, so the city manager, for example, was able to join us every week for a joint call with other city managers, other city attorneys, IGR professionals in those communities from all over the state, so that we could organize and have a discussion about what are those topics, which of these land use items are there, are they applying to cities of all sizes? So, that literal discussion, we help organize and manage to have that debate. And then we will take that information, so I mentioned there were a couple of committees, we deal with every committee at the Capitol, but there are a few committees where a large number of city-related issues. So, the Land and Resource Management Committee deals with a lot of your land use, I happen to be a former director of that committee at my time at the Capitol, so I have a big understanding of their subject matter, and that committee deals with like zoning builder, permit reviews, all of those different items. We had a new committee that was created that solely deals with government entities, political subdivisions, the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, and that committee was, again, new subject matter, but dealt with a lot of municipal and local government politicals. So, when there were bills in that committee or Land and Resource, we would engage with those individual offices, and we may go in and say, you know, "The city of Fayette would be affected by this way, Representative X," and they may, but, well, they weren't, they weren't someone that represented you directly, they were from other areas of the state. We'd go in, and collectively, we also, I mean, our firm is known as the kind of city advocacy firm, so those members often seek us out as subject matter people to engage with them on behalf of our entire client base. And so, again, the easiest way to boil it down is that we're extension of your staff, and we're there full-time, and, and it takes a full-time presence. Unfortunately, it's not something that, that can be engaged in effectively or efficiently from, from afar.
Sure. So, as far as, as far as city staff, you know, so I'm, and, and again, I'm just looking at the, at the contract here, so like utilizing proprietary software to help the city monitor the progress of legislation that affects the city, do you have access to that, Michael? I, I just, and is that something that you, you guys primarily just deal with, Steph? And, and here's the reason, the very specific reason for my question. So, now that the session is over, and undoubtedly, and, and of course, talking about a special session notwithstanding that, but our state representatives and state senators all across the country are gonna go back and they're gonna do their legislative updates tour, and I know that a lot of our citizens will first come to us, anybody on this council, and say, "Hey, so what happened?" Or, "I heard it was this, I heard it was that, was that." I just want to know, it, it sounds like we have a wealth of, of material here, a great resource, I'm just trying best to figure out how I can plug that in and actually get the benefits to the people that I represent here in Fayette, and if that's a, if it's just a, a regular meetings to talk about it, or if it, if it's, you know, because I see one of these things is assist with the preparation of city officials to testify before legislative bodies, or drafting letters, speeches, or other advocacy materials, is that something any one of us could call at any time, and, and if we have questions on it? How does that work? How does that relationship work?
Absolutely, Mayor, and, and I'll take it in two parts, since I kind of saw two questions there. One, all of that, the bill tracking that I discussed, y'all received all throughout session.
Okay.
It's received in newsletters and direct, and certainly, our point of contact for this engagement is the city manager.
Okay.
That, that changes in, in some other opportunities. Your former mayor was very active, as y'all know, was down in Austin a lot, so we engaged with the mayor. Other council folks, we have over, over the various sessions and, and years that we've worked with y'all. So, we try not to say every council person calls directly, but we also say, once we have a dialogue, let's have a dialogue, and then, we've been an open, open book, but we, we do manage through the, the city manager's office, so that we can stay consistent with that. But, so he gets all of our information, I don't know if it's distributed, the newsletter goes out to the council fully?
They are on the email list?
I think, I believe they are.
Right, right. So, the links to those reports.
And it's written for council, so we, during session, we put out at least three, if not five, times a week, an, an update that, that went out to a large, a local government presence. But yes, we, we engage in all that, and certainly, those items you asked about prepping a council member or helping to draft your advocacy letter, or your informational letter, whatever it may have been, we did all those things.
Okay.
We would do that through city management, certainly, again, the mayor, former mayor was very active in those, and so it was oftentimes prepping him, because he happened to be the person there signing up on y'all's behalf, but had it been any of you, that, that's who we would have worked with.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. I appreciate you answering those questions for me.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have questions?
I do.
Cody?
Yeah. So, I'm looking over the sheet here, and it says, and I apologize if this is offensive, we're talking about money. It says the Focus Advocacy, Advocacy Contract is seventeen thousand, two fifty for one quarter. Does that mean that we pay sixty-nine thousand dollars a year to you, or is it just, we're just paying for that quarter? Do you know?
A two-year contract, about seventy thousand a year.
Okay. Seventy thousand a year for two years. So, I heard a little bit about how you represent us, and that you will, you know, you have contact with council members if they need it. My question to you is regarding the bill SB three, do you have any idea if this is one of those that we think that we might have to have special session on, or do you predict that the, that Governor Abbott may veto that bill specifically? And for those that don't know, SB three is the total ban of hemp products, including THC and CBD and some other things, that a lot of our veterans in our community use. I know that it used to be, and it may still be, that Rockwall County per capita has the most veterans for any other county in Texas, and that is something that is near and dear to my heart. My husband's a combat tank commander, he's a Purple Heart recipient, he has personally dealt with all sorts of traumatic brain injuries and other issues, and so for me, that is a local issue, because fifty-three thousand jobs are gonna immediately be gone overnight. It also gets rid of the ability for veterans and mothers of, you know, children with autism and other seizure, seizure disorders, the ability to self-treat. So, I'm just wondering if you personally know if your Focus Advocacy Group advocated on behalf of that or against that, and, you know, what your thoughts are as far as, are you getting a feeling on Greg Abbott, and whether or not he may be vetoing that? I know he's spoken with the Texas Legion and other organizations.
Sure, and, and I'm happy to answer both, two, two things. One, we, it is a very high-profile item, so.
Absolutely.
In order to effectively kind of advise y'all and to predict what's gonna happen to cities when you have a quarter of the bills that pass are gonna apply to you, you have to track what's driving the, the dialogue at the Capitol, right? Like, like I said, the start of session, that was vouchers and educational funding, that was what the elections were about a lot, that's what a lot of the discussion leading into session. That pass, it happened, these other priorities started to take over. And so, one, as a firm, we did, we were not asked to actively engage in that bill, and I did track it as to what was occurring, and we're very well aware of, of what was behind it. Lieutenant Governor, obviously, was very vocal.
That's right.
That's why it was SB three. Senator Perry, who was the author of it, also, he was the author of the original hemp deregulation bill that, that allowed for the current market and, and system. The governor has until the twenty-second of June.
Right. And if he doesn't sign it, it's automatic.
I will just say, and again, this, I don't think I'm, would be speaking out of turn, he's in a difficult position from where he, he is now evaluating, I think that's why you haven't seen action on it. There are a couple of things that could happen there. One, I'll just go ahead and say, I, I believe that in short order, in the next two weeks, we will be in a special session.
Okay.
And.
If that happens.
I don't know the timing exactly of that, but, but all indications from what's coming out in the last few days that we will be. The, that gives the governor a, a little bit of more latitude potentially with SB three. You could veto it and immediately place that item on a special session with others, these things that we've discussed.
Right.
And I think municipal financial authority and budgeting will be something that, that is on that, that special session call quite, quite possibly, as well as these others. But there could be a discussion of a comprehensive hemp regulation system that's placed on that.
Sure.
Or, he could let that bill become law, it doesn't fully kick in until September and call a special session and put it on and say, "Pass additional legislation to create a, a regulatory change before that law ever goes into effect."
Right. But as far as your role, Focus Advocacy Center's role, y'all don't do anything for that.
We're not engaged on it, no ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
And no cities, we've tracked it for cities, just for, for, you know, various authority that might change zoning authority, notice requirements that might happen, anything like that, but we're not engaged from a policy standpoint on behalf of Congress.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Cody. All right. Thank you, and, okay, you have a?
I had a, I had a few questions. When you talk about utilize proprietary software to help the city monitor the progress of legislation, how different is that from the Texas Legislative Online?
Well, we have some that, that is actually ours that we've developed, that, that we've have our own inputs for, that we use on the backend to help track in, in these spaces. But from the, the others, we do use, and we encourage our, our clients to use the free Texas Legislature Online, it's a very robust site. It's not as efficient and as effective as, as Telecon, which is the private sector service we use, who gets things in important times, particularly in May, a lot more quickly, they get behind and can't get updated, and so I can't get a committee sub that might be dramatically different. I've had to send city manager subs of, of bills that, where it changed significantly, and, and we just wouldn't have access to those. And so, they're additional, they're not ones that we have developed per se, but they are, we use two different services, one's called US Ledge and one's called Telecon.
Okay.
And they're, and they're costly to, to get for session, they're proud of their, their items.
On, when you meet with representatives, I guess, with the, with the, the senators and the, the reps, do you notify the cities who exactly you've spoken with, what you've spoken about specifics?
Yeah, yes, counsel, I didn't mean to cut you off. Absolutely. If, if it's something specific about Fayette, Fayette's asking something specific or have a specific concern, if we're there talking about cities or, or with a chairman of, of Land and Resource about zoning, for example, I, I, that may not get directly reported back, but I, that's where we do kind of have those discussions on our, like I mentioned, these weekly clearinghouse calls and, and other organizational things to say, "This is where we're hearing that, you know, I may not have picked up the phone and called Michael and said, 'I just spoke to the chairman about zoning,' I just functionally can't do that."
Because there's a bucket of, there's a bucket of, of cities that are all doing the same thing.
Yeah, and we communicate through our newsletter.
Right.
Happening. But if it were something about, "We need this specific amendment, and we need ought to Senator so-and-so," then of course, that would get reported back, that we had a specific engagement on that. That happened on those discussions about your, your MUD bills, it was more direct discussions with committee members about some of those topics and where that, that was, so that we could advise y'all where, where the committees were, what was doable, what wasn't, where things were heading on some of those topics, if you will.
And there were other cities that, it looks like about maybe twenty-six or so, I may be wrong on the number close on that, that you guys do business with.
And, and we represent a number of coalition of cities as well.
On those. Are we the smallest?
You may be currently, you aren't the smallest ever that we've, we had, we've had folks smaller than y'all. And, and typically, our clients, a lot of those that are on that list, I've had for over twenty years, I was the general counsel at the Texas Municipal League prior to going into private practice, and we were unique in that we decided that because of all these issues and our, our work, I was, had worked at, at TML, my business partner was an assistant city manager in Fort Worth for a time period, and, and dealt with the government relations portion of, of the job, and we, we thought there was a need for a city-focused government relations because of the number of issues, and, and because of that, we have a number of cities that we've represented for, for over a couple of decades now, and the majority on that list are over a decade.
But rarely, you, are you walking in there and saying, "I'm representing Fayette alone"? It's usually a, a group of cities.
Again, unless it is something specific that we're seeking, there were certainly times during session where I said, "I'm the city of Fayette to talk to you about X."
One of the others was cost. I know y'all went up last year, so we're paying roughly about seventy thousand per year for a two-year contract. I noticed the city of Burleson is actually paying forty, fifty thousand as of February and of last year. Have y'all gone up? Is it uniform pricing?
It is uniform, and it varies in scope of what we do.
On that, they posted, and they're, I've got it off this, they've got basically two things, a limited service contract for forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two for twelve months, and a full service contract for a hundred and eight thousand for twelve months.
And that's the contract.
And those are the two. Why would theirs be different than ours? Ours would be seventy.
We were seeing, so theirs is more expensive, because we were seeking proactive legislation that was unique to them, related to an economic development project. Our pricing is uniform, because unlike private sector entities, all of our numbers are public.
On those.
And so, so both, we report to the Ethics Commission about government relation expenses, but our, our contracts are, are public with all of our cities.
But we're paying seventy, they're paying forty, or by fifty thousand, rounded up.
No, they have a full service contract.
They have the full service, but they were offered on this, the forty-nine, nine ninety-two on their.
Right. That was, been more limited than what you all received.
So, we're not on the va- So we're not on the bottom contracts.
And just to be clear, they're paying significantly more than you all.
No, I know, okay, they're paying.
That was true.
But they're paying the full service, but we're not, our seventy thousand is not the.
We're not seeking an individual bill for y'all.
Yeah, it's not the Pinto version of the thing. We're above the minimum, okay, that's, that was my question on that one. I guess that's all.
Okay, great. Any other questions? You have some, okay?
And I'm not sure if this is for Michael or Snapper. The mention of updates and newsletters coming out, it seemed pretty like frequent. And I've been on, the council was elected May third and sworn in on May twelfth, and I haven't gotten anything, and I confirmed with.
We will add anybody, now if.
Okay, so I don't know, I mean, I didn't even.
In the middle of an election change, I will tell you, it is self-reported. So Michael, if you could get anybody that wants to get it, you will get it.
That was probably our mistake to not add the new folks.
Okay. But I can assure you, I wasn't checking the email list in there.
It's been about two months since I've gotten an update, which that would have been March.
That would have, if you were receiving them.
Yeah, I've gotten thirty total.
My suspicion is they're going to your spam filter. Yeah, you didn't get removed unless we were told to remove somebody.
They all go into the spam filter in our email system. Is there any way we can fix that?
Yes, we probably can.
We have some set instructions, Michael, that our IT people have given, because obviously this is a big list that goes to.
I was just gonna say, mine started going into the spam filter. I talked to IT specifically about removing, at least for mine, I don't know if they did it from everybody else's, but I was getting at least three emails a week consistently up until this last week, where I haven't gotten anything last week, but there's really nothing to update on. But number of updates as far as everything going on, probably more information than I can even grasp, so.
And we do try to boil those down to kind of give you a flavor, knowing that, again, y'all can't look at all three thousand bills and where they are and hearing it's gonna be set and who's mad at who. I mean, some of this is not as easy to connect those dots to. You mentioned SB three, that affected a lot of legislation that had nothing to do with the subject matter of that legislation, affected some of our cities. Some of those land use bills didn't pass because of the stalemate over some of that discussion. So we try to let our clients know that about what's happening. We try to boil that newsletter down into the most succinct ability for y'all to get the most useful information.
Quick question, Michael, do you know when the last time that focused advocacy sent an email? Because my junk, my junk mail folder's been empty.
Yeah, probably.
I received one at seven oh one AM on Saturday.
Yeah, my junk mails, I never, I never delete the junk mail.
Well, we can make sure, we'll just, we'll talk about that, make sure that we're all getting the emails, we're all on the list and that sort of thing, we can handle that from our end. Any other questions? Martha, I didn't know if you were, you were looking at me, I didn't know if that was like, I've got a question.
So we give you a general idea of the things we as a city are interested in, is that through the city manager? And then you represent us collectively with other cities who are partnering with you. And you give us reports on how things are going with the legislature, and you honk the horn if there's something we need to be paying attention to.
And we actively try to work to achieve, again, kind of the guiding principle is that we're there to preserve your local authority, if I had to boil it down. And that could vary on whatever the subject matter is. But in essence, we're there advocating on behalf of cities, large and small, and from around the state. We work directly with the Texas Municipal League, so we're coordinated with them to understand the topics that they're working on as well. But in leading up to session, there's a lot that goes on, and we do include y'all in that discussion so that we can be prepared when we start and do have an idea. We were able to advise and say, it's gonna be a very, very busy session on land use authority and development processes, and especially impactful for communities that are growing with residential populations like y'all.
And the council meets, we probably talk about it at least once a year, the legislative program, so y'all have a resolution and we've talked, I think we talked about it twice.
Twice last, leading up to session, I think in October is when y'all adopted your official resolution.
And then that resolution, we go to, it goes to Snapper and his crew, and we talk through the different items and then get with our local folks.
It's a lot, again, to try to manage on behalf of any one city. I mean, the city of Dallas can't do it alone and doesn't. The city of Houston, go with the largest, they can, no city can. It is a collective local government effort. And so in essence, where y'all are being more proactive and engaged in expressing your opinion as a community on it. That would be in essence, Mayor.
Well, thank you, did you have something, Cody?
Do you know the number roughly, how many bills were presented this time that have to do with, you know, local and municipal governments, like a rough amount?
Yes, ma'am. Specific bills and constitutional amendments, there were over three thousand bills out of the nine thousand and change, slightly over nine thousand that were filed. So fully a third of the proposals directly impacted some city department operation authority some way.
Sure.
Good, bad, or indifferent.
And.
Of that, and of the number of bills passed, nearly twenty-five percent or one quarter of all of the bills that went to the governor's desk directly impact cities in some form or fashion that same way. And again, that is by far and away the highest number, not counties, not school districts, not electric companies, no one else.
For me, you said very successful earlier, and for me, when the government gets to writing laws, I don't think of that as a success, I think of that as rights being taken away. But that's just my conservative nature. But what the people are gonna wanna know, because we're paying seventy thousand a year, right? They're gonna wanna know what the effective rate is, what the success rate is on y'all's advocacy, you know, whenever you go. So out of those three thousand, you said twenty-five percent made it. Of that twenty-five percent, what's the past, like, this is what you advocated for and this is what you failed to win, or whatever you wanna call it.
Just cleared, there were twelve hundred bills that passed approximately, two hundred and thirteen, I think, it's a number back in the slide, and two hundred and eighty-nine of those were cities, so approximately a quarter of the bills passed, not of our tracked bills. And the success on that is something that you would have to measure differently. Some of these bills, as I said, that y'all were, would have been opposed to because it limited your local authorities or negatively impacted you under the assessment of the resolution y'all at council adopted, the direction. Those bills at the end of session didn't apply to you. So we fought often to get communities bracketed out or have exceptions for things. Candidly, we were pretty successful, and that's not just us alone.
Sure.
But we have, I can tell you, your seat at the table was different because of that engagement. We've got to work and give feedback on that. Then some of those bills, some of those bills of the two hundred and eighty-nine that passed that affect cities were good bills.
Were good, right. Yeah, just because they passed doesn't mean it's bad. I'm just wondering, like, as far as y'all's firm goes, how do y'all feel y'all did this session?
For what cities we're facing, again, we have to kind of judge by how local, our local government client base. We had more monumental issues facing cities this session than in any session in my career. And by that, in a given session, there's like two or three bills usually that are really above and beyond that would change your operations or your authority here at the city in some way. Probably had fifteen to twenty of those types of bills this session. And that would have dramatically changed kind of the way things have traditionally been done locally. And so I think when you take it in that scope, most of those didn't happen. And we played a big part in helping say that, hey, some of these shouldn't happen, or y'all ought to look at it, or maybe it doesn't make sense for those proposals to apply to a community like fate. And so.
Last question is, you have twenty-six cities, or I'm just gonna go roughly off of what his estimate was. Is there ever a time when, you know, you have a city that wants one thing and then you have another city that you're advocating for that does not want the same thing? And in those situations, how do y'all address those issues?
In my thirty years of working with cities around the legislature, very rarely. And by that, I mean, very rarely does do two cities go down there and you'd ask, would I have a conflict? Absolutely I would, if somebody said, we really want you to pass Senate Bill fifteen. Fate was like, we really want you to stop Senate Bill fifteen. Less than three times in thirty years have I ever had it where two cities had conflicting positions and they were on a transportation funding item. Generally, cities don't go down to Austin and fight other cities. We've got too many other folks. And so it's something we would have to deal with. But one thing that we do do, and is the more likely scenario, and I see it every session with communities, and I saw it this session, there is a very high degree of potential for professionals like myself to get into a conflict of interest with private sector interest in cities in Austin, whether that be an electric company, a telecom company, a cable company, builders, developers, and others. That's where the conflicts arise, and we saw cities that unfortunately had problems with that. We put in our contract, since it was referenced several times, it would be in there, that we are, if you, I'll paraphrase, on the city team. If there is a conflict with one of our clients between a private sector and us, we default in the contract and say that it would be resolved in favor of the city. And we're proud of that, and I will tell you, it's not the norm.
Thank you, I appreciate you being so open to explain all that because I don't think I was here last time you came, or did he come last year? I don't know. I just, I've only been on a year, so this is my first time meeting you, and I just wanted to make sure I asked all those questions, so I get a good scope for, you know, what your firm does for our city, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to add that there was a question about it for the smallest, and Magnolia, Texas, seventy-two hundred and thirty-two people, and Rowan Ocasas, ninety-seven hundred, so we're not the smallest.
See?
All right, any other?
One quick one, again, sorry. The, how many items would you say that limited, that were to limit local zoning survived? And out of those, how many would you say that were, that cities our size were carved out?
Yeah, let me go back up here, and this has been, in that recap that we put out on Friday, and we helped TML, we'll make sure you get a copy, whether it got in the spam filter or not. It's a recap by land use, and so we, all the bills that pass, we have a recap already. But if you go to, okay, so Senate Bill fifteen was a major bill. And again, that dealt with prohibiting cities from requiring certain minimum lot sizes. And that was how it initially was filed, and then it became a bigger debate about allowing for more intense multi-use as well in that space. But there were a lot of changes, it was bracketed, and that also, they limited it needs to be five acre lots that have never been previously platted. And so they limited pretty far to get it passed, otherwise this bill was probably gonna get voted down on the Texas House floor, but it did pass in the final days. Senate Bill eight forty is the one that's garnering the most attention. I will tell you, this wasn't bracketed at various stages throughout, again. And it says that you can put multifamily in any zoning classification that allows residential or higher with limitations on industrial, have some other exemptions. But it, in essence, takes out your current system of community involvement in making a decision for approval of one of those. So it's a big change for those communities that it applies to, or at least has the potential to be. And there's some communities here in the metroplex and DFW that are very concerned about this bill. Others, this is HUD code manufactured homes, has to be allowed. Can't be zoned out of your city altogether, has to have some zoning classification, some area that they're allowed in the community. That bill's been one that's been a perennial. It was much broader and bigger as it moved through the system. That's one that we worked to try to narrow, had a very dedicated author. These others, Senate Bill twenty-four seventy-seven also was one that was about office conversions to residential, kind of empty tower discussion, and that changed a lot of the process for that for a number of communities.
And were carved out of all those?
You're carved out of all of those that I've just discussed. And again, at various times, you weren't.
Yeah, it can change, I mean, in the future, it can change, definitely.
Go back up to, I said, the cutting room floor. These various land use items, HB twenty-three, for example, those bills were all very close to passage, and they had dramatic effects. Again, some of these other items in the legislature in the final ten days affect other things, and we benefited from some of that, because I'm not sure if we would have had some of these things taken to a vote on the floor, that we wouldn't be talking about what the governor was gonna be doing with them now.
Oh, they're definitely scary. How many survived without carve-outs?
There certainly were some land use things that changed that don't have carve-outs. And again, some of them are technical in nature, maybe not dramatic changes, they're specific purpose. So there's certainly some, I couldn't give you the exact number off.
Anything that majorly affects zoning?
No.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions, thoughts? Well, thank you for answering, I know we peppered you with a lot of them, but we definitely know who we're gonna call if we have Texas Legislature trivia night. So thank you very much for being here and sharing that with us, answering our questions, I appreciate you.
Mayor and council, thank y'all and look forward.
Thank you. Okay, what's the next item on our agenda, please?
Next will be Agenda Item six B, which is discuss, consider, and take any necessary action to provide staff direction regarding a new downtown parking lot.
Then, Michael, I'll have a presentation for this one as well.
Mayor, council, we've had brief conversations about this, you're aware of this project. This is, well, we'll be, given the direction that we continue to receive from you and from our Municipal Development District, the new downtown parking lot behind the fate grocery store. We're getting close to, well, we have the opportunity now to enter into a lease agreement with the railroad to utilize this space for a parking lot. But since we initially started conversations with them about a year ago, some of the terms have changed as to what's possible for us. So we're bringing this to you tonight just in hopes of the direction from you if you're comfortable under the arrangement that they're setting forth to proceed. So again, we're talking the property that the railroad owns behind fate grocery. Last April, we had a discussion with the, with them about an opportunity to purchase or lease. Part of that conversation was when we were looking at potentially co-locating our police building as far, part of a mixed-use project downtown. So we were looking at adding additional parking. At that point, we had an opportunity to potentially purchase it. Since that time, the vice president of real estate in the, in the arm, in the real estate arm of the railroad has said, us purchasing is not an option. They're actually only interested in leasing that, that's something that we're interested in doing. That's just part of the strategy right now of only selling land in very strategic locations, not small land sales throughout the railroad's right-of-way. So, and then, so the lease, so they have offered us a lease arrangement. They don't negotiate lease arrangements with cities because they pass through so many cities around the country, they're not wanting to enter into very specific lease arrangements with every one of them. So the one that they have offered us, they would allow us to lease and to add parking behind the grocery store. They gave us a price of twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars per year with an escalator of three percent, which is not uncommon. But at any time, they have the ability to take the, to ask for it back with a thirty-day notice. And so while they have said to us, it's very unlikely that they would need that back, they just need the, they need the flexibility for something to change, if something changes, that they would. There are other cities along the railroad. uh, that they would. There are other cities, um, along the railroad in the D F W that do lease for parking. This isn't an uncommon arrangement. Uh, but I wanted to make sure before we enter into any lease with them, which would, which would, you would become aware of when we do, that you are, um, you're aware of the arrangement that we're in. We we see the need for downtown parking. In an ideal world, you'd have the opportunity to purchase it and have control of it. That's just not an option that's on the table right now. Uh, Colin with the railroad, who we've been working with, did go to his boss, make our case, ask if there's any flexibility, talked about how we did have the option a year ago, and now it's gone away. And at this point, they're not interested in engaging in a purchase conversation. That may come back at some point as an option, um, according to Colin, but right now, that's not the the direction that they're looking. With that, we did then look at what type of parking lot would we want to build if that is the case. Obviously, a full concrete parking lot is a much different and more expensive parking lot than a gravel parking lot. That, a- and when I say gravel, I don't mean we just dump truck, drop some gravel off, you know, steamroll it and move on. We're talking about steel structure and making it look nice, parking lots, designate parking spaces. Uh, we had a conversation with our engineer about asphalt. Uh, asphalt in our soils is ch- is challenging. There's, uh, a lot of maintenance that comes with that. We don't specifically have pricing for all of those. Concrete, we're looking at about a half million. Our engineer is looking at a, an O P C on gravel, just to get an idea of what that would, what that would cost. So all of that would be, uh, you would know all of that before we enter into the lease agreement. Tonight, I just wanted to get your direction as to whether you're, whether you're comfortable with that type of a lease arrangement to add parking in our downtown.
And we we talked to M D D
Oh, yes.
last week. Yeah, and they were, they were comfortable with it.
Yep. They did ask, the, obviously, we would come back to them when we have pricing on the gravel and, you know, versus concrete and all that, but they're, yeah, they're, I appreciate you sharing that. M D D was comfortable with the arrangement generally.
And the lease payment is budgeted in the M D D budget?
Correct. M D D would would cover that lease. This is a downtown business parking, essentially, uh, additional parking for our downtown businesses.
But the half million, if we went concrete, that would come from, we would have, we would decide on that?
Yeah, well, that's budgeted in the M D D as well, but we'd have to approve the contract and everything. So so we, what, the the reason, I guess, for you tonight is, before we even really start going down this road with our engineer and design and all that kind of stuff, we don't want to spend the money on any of that design if it's kind of a no-go of, hey, if they're not going to sell it to us, or if they're unwilling to negotiate the lease, then we're not interested in the parking. Um, I wanted to make sure you're comfortable with that before we go down that road.
I I I would just say, my my two cents, if it's even worth that much, is, um, that 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 I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good spot, but I would strongly consider the timing of when we do it and initiate a lease, because, um, we, for for the downtown activities now, we're probably good on parking. But once the food hall moves over into the park, um, I I think the timing of initiating the lease would probably be better, um, to initiate about the time we're moving the food hall, just to make sure we've got the appropriate coverage for the even greater activities that we'll have down the road. Um, that I I think initiating it now would just be spending money for for parking that we don't need. Um, but it definitely, a- as we move more down there, we'll definitely need to use that. So I would, I would just suggest the timing of it more than anything.
Yep. And I appreciate that. Scott and good, good questions lead to more information. The other, with that in mind, the one thing we have talked about is when we begin construction on the downtown park, that's when we had thought we would initiate the lease so that construction vehicles can be asked to park over there and not take, because the size of the construction we're talking about at the park could take up the entire parking with all of the different subs it'll show. But I think the same idea. Initiate it when we really need it, not prematurely. Okay.
Uh, sorry. Go ahead.
Um, I'm so glad that y'all asked before y'all got the engineer, because I am not in favor of investing in something that we are going to lease and not buy. And I I don't know what the opportunity is to buy in the future. Um, but if my opinion means anything, I would go the absolute cheapest route, and I don't even know if I like that. Um, but what if, could we do month-to-month to allow the construction trucks to be there and not go into a twenty-two thousand dollar, is that what the number was?
That was the number.
A year lease plus half a million in concrete. I just, um, I mean, right now, we don't have a big vibrant downtown. I want one. Um, but, you know, I get, I get wanting to be prepared and everything, but, um, you know, right now, I don't really see the need, like Scott. We don't, we don't have a lot of parking needs at this time. Um, I don't know. I just don't see it right now. I don't see leasing something right now as an emergency. If it was an emergency and, you know, we had a lot of complaints about parking downtown, I would understand that. But right now, I just think that's a, that's a lot of extra money, um, that maybe could be used to other things.
My, uh, my, couple things. What was the parking like this weekend down there for the farmer's market?
I was, uh, out of town, and so was Matt. So neither of us were there, but maybe Scott or Mark could speak to that. I know you, I think, well, maybe you weren't there. I know Scott was there. Sorry.
I I was there, and as far as the lots around the multi-use buildings and and the parking on Main Street was all pretty full, but the back lot off of Brown, um, was pretty open.
Okay. Yeah, my my only concern is that it's a chicken and the egg thing, right? We don't have a lot of things downtown now because we don't have the parking for something. So like, when we had those, uh, Cinco de Mayo, the, uh, oh, the Halloween deal, all that stuff, parking was a nightmare. There wasn't any parking. I would agree that the gravel parking lot's probably sufficient, just because, you know, we don't own it. Now, one day, if we do buy it, we can always upgrade that. But, um, I would think that with the amount of effort that Matt and them are putting in growing downtown, that it may be a sooner-than-later thing, that, hoping that it's a sooner-than-later thing. Um, again, I also agree that, uh, we shouldn't do it until it's time. But again, if it's a chicken and the egg, and we want people to come, and they can't come because there's no parking, at what point, you know, d- do we do that? So maybe that's something we hear back from Matt about when he thinks that this may be necessary to be able to grow. Because, I mean, this is the first weekend of the farmer's market. It's it's going to only grow from there. And yes, it was good now, but is it going to be good in six months? So.
Can you go back to the, to the s- to the slide with, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor.
So, all all good comments, all good questions. One thing I wanted to point out, and not that this is inaccurate, but the change in that Vice President changed their policy. And this guy said, look, I've worked here for years, and they go back and forth on whether or not they want to lease or sale or sell. The provision, I'm I'm with you on the risk, right, of the lease. They look at the value, they value the property, and then they determine a sale price versus a, uh, capitalized lease rate, right? So it's not, it's not as if we're getting a bad deal, so to speak. But I I understand the risk factor. One of the things is that the lease says, it has to be, for them to take it back, it has to be for a railroad use. And the only type of railroad use could be, they want to build like a maintenance shed or something there, okay? They have thousands of properties all over the country, maybe more than thousands. Um, and then the other part would be, is there a customer that needs to be served by a rail siding? Uh, if if you're all familiar with the property, it's very small. It's wedged in there. Fate Grocery does not have the need for a rail spur, and even if they could, it wouldn't fit in there, right? So I think our risk is is super low on on losing it. Um, so that that's a good question.
How many parking spaces would this provide?
So we've done a little bit of sketching, and we think sixty to sixty-five, and that kind of depends on where we put the curb cuts and how many we have versus, you know, coming off of Fate Main and Crawford and and whether or not we use easements with Fate Grocery. So sixty to sixty-five, roughly, is another parking space.
What's currently behind, like Sauce and Vine, that, uh, that parking over there? How many, how many spaces is that?
Uh, that's a great question. So two things. I I don't know the answer because I just can't remember, but.
Ninety-eight.
There it is. Ninety-eight?
Pull that out, Mayor.
Ninety-eight, Mayor. Um, that parking lot, part of the design for the park will extend that, and it adds like forty or fifty more, and we own that land. So that's something that will be, that will add to it. The reason we want to be proactive and get out ahead of this, Stephen mentioned it, is the construction, when it occurs at the park, you also have to look at the timing right now. So today, do we have a parking problem? No. But ju- I've been here six months, and just in my time with the organization, I've seen the parking issue sort of, oh, hey, look, it's a full, right? So think about this. Um, we have, uh, Wings Over Fate that has signed a lease on the first floor of, um, one, one ten Green Hill. They're going to come in with forty-five hundred square feet, and to run a restaurant for lunch and dinner, they'll have ten or twelve employees there on a daily basis, right? And then you have busy lunch hours, dinner hours. Sauce and Vine will open up next month. And yes, that parking lot is available to them. I think they have thirty-five dedicated spaces for those guys. But you add staff in there, lunch and dinner, you have two restaurants going. Well, that's only forty-five hundred square feet. There's another three thousand square feet on the first floor. The second floor, Trinity Valley, uh, Oral Surgery, they'll, they're about done, but they're not open yet, right? So you get those guys open. They're half of that second floor. You've got five or ten staff members there. You have four or five patients every hour. Um, add into that the other half of the building, um, and and their marketing to other medical uses there, throw in a doctor's office or something like that. I think you guys get the picture here. It's already growing rapidly. The other thing that I want to point out is that everything takes time, right? So just the design of a parking lot takes three or four months, and then you go out there and you bid, you get good contracts, and then, um, everybody expects something to happen in four or five months, and then there's two or three months of delay on top of that. So if we start the process now, we don't have a parking lot for another year, right? So that's why we're budgeting this in for fiscal year twenty-six, which doesn't actually start until October. So so on the timing question, tot- have we thought about that a little bit? And I I'm completely with you there. I want to get out ahead of it so that we actually have a parking lot in place before the the construction on the park starts. Um, and then now we have construction vehicles now competing for the space. I mean, we've noticed this at the hub. By the way, we just have four offices remaining, but we get those leased up, and there's more visitors. There's more social members that are coming and parking there on top of that. Um, but then you get construction happening on the second floor, like you did. And it was like, where do all our parking go? Well, because you have five pickup trucks over here, and then you got this landscaper with a trailer on it taking up five spaces, and then you throw in there Fate Station Market on a Saturday. And, um, by the way, we had about two hundred, uh, customers show up, and we had, I think, twenty-two tents out there. We're already getting inundated with a, a, with a ton of interest, right? So, uh, residents are figuring it out. They want to show up. So what if we have four hundred in July and throw in thirty vendors or thirty-five vendors? So very, very quickly, what was, we don't have a problem, turns into we have a massive problem, and it just takes time to solve it. So, um, I think, sorry, I just wanted to give my two.
No, that's, that's good.
I I get to go on vacation, made Stephen do all this, and I showed up and.
Nice. So I just want to, I just want to a- ask if we're in corporate, because as I look at this, I'm looking at it going, if I was going to go to, uh, somewhere on the, on the, uh, you know, even red dirt, so shall I look and I say, okay, parking over behind Fate Grocery, I'm going to have to pa- across, you know, if I'm going to, if I'm closer, I'm going to cross Fate Main somewhere and then come down or or kind of walk awkwardly, because that that parking lot's kind of weird anyway, versus parking like the, where where a lot of those ninety-something are, uh, behind Sauce and Vine. Are you s- I just want to make sure I'm I'm clear on this. Are you saying that we are already calculating all of those spaces, and we think that with everything that's coming, we will still need this as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll also mention, this is the, you're pointing out, but, um, sorry, there's a dumpster enclosure up there. You can kind of, the last thing you would pass on the right side, on the east side of the road, before you hit the railroad tracks on Crawford, we are planning to put in a, a crosswalk there with with lights and the type of, type of slowdown signs we have. So that would be easy path. The other thing I'll point out is, this parking lot would be fantastic for, uh, of course, we talked about moving the food hall into the park. And so, uh, for, not not necessarily customers, but for employees who come, and they're going to be there for four, eight-hour shifts at a time, hey, you guys go park there. So it's sort of like, you know, when you talk to the big box, like Walmart will have a
A blue line.
Draw a blue line. They say, staff's got to park back there, right? That, that's the kind of the concept here.
When will we get the figures for how much it would cost with gravel?
Uh, she, Missy, our engineer's working on that right now. Just to you, well, just to give the initial kind of guesses the price, and then she has not started design yet.
Okay. But we don't have the official guess yet either?
Not, not, not on that. Just on the concrete, because we, we were going that road because we thought we were going to have a purchase and everything, and then that changed, and we were on a call with her, uh, right before we both left for vacation, where she said, let me start putting together some price estimates on the gravel, which we will, of course, make you aware of.
What's interesting here, Cody, is that some, something like sixty to seventy percent of this cost are going to be the same no matter what. So like, the prep work and all the stabilization that you have to do, and then you go, like, I've always thought that asphalt would be way cheaper. But when you go and factor it in, and you look at oil prices and things like that, it's like, oh, well, for fifteen percent more, we could have got concrete. And so gravel, I don't know, maybe it's a twenty-five percent discount or s- uh, but then you have the factor, I, Steve's, Steve's not here, but he'll tell you, gravel means more maintenance, and it's more cost for us on a continual basis, so. But but we'll look at it.
Yep. Okay. And, uh, Mark, do you have a question or comment?
What other spots down in downtown do we own that we could, I'm I'm not looking at anything other than where the food hall is now, that we actually own. I don't think there is any other place
Just.
to go do this. This, this looks like kind of our only option, and what, uh, Andrew said, uh, the other spots are over there by Sauce and Vine, so.
Yeah, we own that block, and then, of course, the park, so that that land up there.
I mean.
There is a a piece of railroad right-of-way that they would also be willing to lease to us southwest of this. So if you continue this diagonal down toward, uh, past, on the other side of, south of Fate Main, there's, there is more land over there. But that gets us further and further away from the core, so it's less, less ideal.
Could we put in the budget, uh, for some boxes of Kleenex, just in case we do have to go pull that concrete out, because I'm going to need it?
Yeah.
I I'm not, I'm, that's a joke.
You approve the budget, Councilman. You could do whatever you want.
I would, uh, no, it's, uh, that's, that's a long shot, but I had to throw that out there. Um, but no, that's a, that's my only question.
So I'm excited that, um, there's actually a use for that space. I I assumed it was all railroad things that we could never touch and just open space right there. So parking would be a good option, although it doesn't sound great to to spend a lot of money on concrete for something that's a lease. And then my only other concern is the safety. I know, I know you're talking about the crosswalk, but it's, it's pretty treacherous right there. So I'm, I'm hoping that could turn out well if we do put on a, in a crosswalk right there. I think we need to pay a lot of attention to that.
Yeah. So one other, one other point I want to make is, in the railroad right-of-way, can't do anything vertical at all. So not only is it a good use for it, but it's the only thing you could actually do with it. It has to be horizontal. We couldn't put up a, a, you know, a pole or anything like that.
One, one thing I would mention, too, that that road that's going north-south, it connects to sixty-six. So Fate Main going west to sixty-six is state-owned, but that part of Crawford going, um, north from Fate Main to sixty-six, that, the city does own that, so we do have some more flexibilities of what we would do with that, different type of, uh, uh, traffic calming or things to try to slow traffic down as people are approaching that, that crosswalk. That's a fair point.
Okay, so we've had quite an array of opinions on this, but we need to give the staff direction. So, um, Council, what do we, where where are we with this?
I would add, are are you looking for a motion?
No, 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 just Just motion, just, just kind of the, just the, essentially, the nod of, hey, well, let's, let's continue to proceed.
Do you?
Let's be, yeah, there you go.
Any head shakes?
So do you, do, do most of you?
Head shakes.
Well, I just know, I mean, because you brought up a good point, too. It's like, starting now, or are we, you know, do you say, hey, let's wait six months? What are your, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, no, that's a good, I mean, again, I I appreciate some, obviously, some information that's, that's come out of here, maybe, guys, that I, I think, if if there's any intention to ever do it, the design is going to be the design. The land won't change. So we would, we would hopefully proceed with the design, if that's the intent. The construction timeline, we can continue to talk about as we
Okay.
Again, early July, we're going to bring the park design to you and kind of start talking through that, and then we talk about financing of that. So when does this tr- all trigger? Those are things that we're talking about.
Yeah, so and, so I would say that we have a consensus to at least move forward with, with the design on it, and timing may come later.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Okay. And I appreciate Matt coming up, goes on vacation, gets well-rested, and man, he is just a fireball up there. That was great.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was awesome. So thank you for the backup on that. Appreciate it.
All righty. So that answers. I want to write, what's our next item, please?
Next will be six C, and this is a resolution to support federal legislation related to zip codes. This is Resolution Number R twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three-nine to support H R three-zero-nine-five, which, if passed, will assign a single and unique zip code for the city of Fate.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, the city of Fate has, uh, since twenty thirteen been working with the U S, uh, Post, Postal Service, Postmaster, as well as, uh, state and federal legislators to basically promote legislation that would assist in the city in developing a little bit more of its own identity, uh, in part through the creation of a single, um, and unique, uh, zip code that would encompass the entirety of the, of the city and potentially the, the E T J of, of the city of Fate. Um, back in twenty thirteen, there was a bit of a discussion to try to just, uh, first off, there was a push to get legislation to develop a, a unique zip to develop a unique zip code. That didn't happen, but we did get U.S. Postal Service authority to allow you to write the name Fate on your envelope rather than Rockwell or Roy City associated with the specific zip code. As you can see in the figure before you, there are actually three different zip codes that can fall upon property located within the Fate Municipal City limits. And so this, this year, Representative Lauren Boebert from Colorado has introduced, again, a bill, actually a House resolution, that it's H R three-zero-nine-five. And what that would do, it'd establish among a list of sixty-five different cities, a unique zip code for the city of Fate. And so again, this would basically take the three zip codes that currently apply, remove those from applying to the city, and creating a new zip code for the city. It's kind of creating like a unique identity and consolidating that zip code designation for the city. There are a number of other cities in Texas that are included in this legislation. The cities of Fairview, Heath, Murphy, Northlake, Park, and Sargent are also included in the list of sixty-five cities. Pat Fallon, our state, sorry, federal representative, is a co-author of this legislation. And so one of the things that we've been doing in, in participating in this collection of cities that have been advocating or at least discussing this legislation, there have been some best practices that have been promoted. Those included the preparation of a letter from Mayor Greenberg, which was sent out some time ago, to Representative Fallon, just to reiterate a support. There was also a recommendation that the entire city council participate in the passage of a resolution indicating their support of this legislation, so that's what's before you tonight. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions?
I don't know if it's just my crotchety nature, but I hate change. And I can just hear the complaints from the constituents when I tell them that their zip code has changed. Not only that, but I just taught my nine-year-old daughter her address. So my mom job just got a little bit harder. I do see the need for this, I just hate it. And so I wanted to put that on the record, that's all.
Fair.
So I'm a proponent of this, because I live in seven-five-one-eight-nine, and I can't write that I live in Fate and add seven-five-one-eight-nine, because it won't believe me. So I always have to say Roy City, and I thought, I better live in Fate, because I'm now a part of the council. So do we know how they would determine what the zip code would be? Like, my P O box is seven-five-one-three-two.
Sure.
Could they just expand that for the?
And it actually, I have, I have the actual language of the legislation here. It's very simple. It says, no later than two-hundred-and-seventy days after the date of the enactment of this act, the U.S. Postal Service shall designate a single unique zip code for each of the following communities, listed communities, and that's it. So there's no process, I mean, this is federal legislation, so you might imagine. There's no process, there's no detail. It basically just enables and directs the postal service to start that process. And from what I've heard in other cases where this legislation has occurred in the past years for other cities, usually it's like a three-year transition period. It's not like all of a sudden you all have to go through the process right away. You know, there's a lot of grace period related to adoption by residents of the community to implement that action over time.
There you go, Cody, you'd have three years to make that right with your nine-year-old. Be twelve by the time you have to submit it. Okay, any other questions?
I'm a big proponent of this too. If, if you do happen to live in the, a zip code, a different number than it's going to be, will, will the post office, do we know automatically just forward your mail? Will they make the adjustment for a period of time, kind of like forwarding?
Yeah, I believe that's the case. I'm speculating a little bit, because again, we don't have the description. I'm working off anecdotal information here. But yes, I mean, there would, there would be a period of time, and the U.S. Postal Service sets it up. A lot of communities have gone through this before. This is certainly not pioneering, you know, condition here. And so they have a condition where they set up the forwarding, so that even if you change and somebody has your old address, there's that transition. Of course, we know how efficiently the postal service can work sometimes and accurately. But nonetheless, cities have gone through this before. One of the things about bringing this to you tonight and working on this now, we're a city of nearly thirty thousand. We're not going to stop growing, and it's going to be a lot easier to do it now than when we're fifty thousand. So the timing is good, because we're a part of a coalition of cities. We have a co-author at the state, at the federal level. So, and then the details will work out should the legislation pass.
Okay. Yeah, that was my question. This has, has not passed yet, has it?
No, sir.
Okay, and?
It has passed through committee, though.
Okay, and then the, I guess you wouldn't know if it's going to force us to use the post office in Fate. God, please tell me no.
I don't know.
Okay.
Now, that's probably logistically the biggest issue.
Yeah.
And technically, the post, there's another zip coding right there in the middle with the post office. But because you've got Rockwell delivering from one side, and you've got Roy City delivering from the other, so they've got to figure out what are they doing, and they've got Heath in there, so. Yeah, that, that should be the most exciting part of the whole process, is how they're going to actually pull this off.
So, so we're just, tonight we're voting on whether or not we support it. If it doesn't pass, then it means nothing.
That's right. There's a resolution in your packet that basically states that the councils will support. That would be, if it were to be passed tonight, that would be shared with our, our federal legislative representative and as well as some of the other advocates of the, of the initiative.
Right. We, we wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we're all going to change our address. But it's for the good of the community, we think.
Long term, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts? So again, just so everybody's clear, if we pass this resolution tonight, it doesn't mean that it's going to happen. We would have to, of course, wait for what happens in Washington. So do I have a motion for this item?
I'll, I'll make a motion when we approve resolution number R twenty-two-five zero-three-nine.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, please vote. All right, the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. All right, what's our next item, please?
Okay, next will be six D, discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding the contract with Focused Advocacy LLC for Legislative Services.
All right, Mr. Hatley, this is your item.
I pretty much asked most of the questions. My, my opinion is, it really hasn't changed over the last year. I think elected officials are, it's our duty to be the lobbyist, is to go down there and, go down to Austin, which is what our former mayor did. I, I think we're too small to participate. It's my opinion. It's, I don't think, I think, I think the money could be better spent. I mean, no offense, sir, I mean, you guys do great work, but I think we're too small. I don't think if we opted out of this, a lot's going to change. I think it's largely what we're paying for is, is information and emails that I largely already get from T M L. And I can track bills on Texas legislation online, and I'm getting updates on, you know, through my email. When things go, things move out of committee, they go up on the calendar when they're passed. I just think largely, you know, several of us can make pledges to, to take a few days off during legislative sessions and go down there and go testify. I just think the money could be better, could be better spent. I, I know, I went back and watched the, the hearing that we did on this a year ago, and our former mayor said he did ninety-nine percent of the work up there. And I said, well, then what do we need, you know, you know, them for? I think they do good work, they're, they're obviously very, very knowledgeable. But I think our representatives would probably react better and, by us banging on their doors rather than, you know, a lobbying group on there. I've actually been told as such by, by several of them. I know sometimes they won't tell you, you know, the, the truth of, but I pick up the phone and talk to a lot of these people already, several of them. Don't get along on, on every issue. I mean, I'll give you a perfect example, Paul Bettencourt. Pretty good on homestead exemption. He's absolutely terrible when it comes to cities' rights on zoning. I mean, he's, he's, on that, he's opposed to everything that we believe in on this council. But that's my, my opinion. I just, I think we're too small to participate. I don't think if we didn't participate, it's going to affect the legislation at all. I think we would probably stand a better chance of, of going down there and waiting six, seven, eight hours and going and giving our, our two-minute speeches before the committees. There's a piece of software you can use that's connected to the committees where you can, which I, I use to talk to the House members on the committees and say, I'm for this or I'm against this. And it will, it forwards it. Now, is it as effective as a proprietary piece of software, an email? We can use emails too. But for the Senate, we actually, to go on the record, you actually have to be down there. You actually have to testify. You have to be in person. House members, I mean, we've got Katrina Pearson, and we got, we got Bob Hall. And they're here locally. We can go see them here locally, knock on their doors. And if we go down to Austin, we can knock on the doors of opposing senators and supporting senators and, and let them know how we feel. That's, that's how I feel. I think there's better ways we could spend our money. The money's going to be spent for other cities anyway. They're going to, I hate to say it, but let's ride their coattails on those. That's my opinion.
Cody?
I tend to agree with Mark. I think that no matter what, they're very good at what they're doing, and they're going to go down there and advocate for the twenty-five other cities that have signed up for the service. And if we have seventy extra thousand dollars a year in the budget, we can extend the travel budget, and we can go advocate on behalf of Fate rather than having somebody, you know, that may or may not be customizing what we need for Fate. They're doing it under a large umbrella, so I, I tend to agree. They're going to be advocating on behalf of smaller cities, whether we're a member or not.
Martha?
And I'm differing from that opinion a little bit. I was surprised to hear the, the extent of what you all do, and it seems like really valuable information. And with nine thousand bills down there, that was, that's a lot of information and a lot of things to, to filter and digest. And I think there's a lot of value to what you do, and it's a pretty reasonable price for legal fees.
Did you, did you just turn your, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, um, it, it, it's beyond being able to knock on our senator's door, our, our rep's door, or any other, any other member of the Texas House and Senate. It's how we get information. And there's, there, I, I use Texas Legislate Scan. I, I've used it extensively for the last three sessions, and it's a good resource for information. The information I've gotten from Focus Advocacy over the last two sessions has been more concise, more to the point as far as bills that really need our attention. It, it, for me, it's not how we do stuff. The stuff from T M L tends to be a little bit more, less timely than, than what we're getting from Focus Advocacy. And, and being able to engage with our appropriate elected officials and whoever else we engage to i- is a matter of getting information in a timely way, being able to process it, and then us being able to have those conversations with our elected officials. I, I'm not worried about the advocacy the guys, you guys are doing on our behalf. It, it's our job to engage in however we want to. I've had several conversations with our state rep and our state senator's office about my opinions on, on bills. Eighty percent of the conversations that I had were, were because of information sent out by Focus Advocacy and the timeliness of it, because I'm getting information from, from them three or four days later, or three or four days earlier than I am from, from the state, the Texas Legislate Scan or T M L. So, so it's, it's about how we get the information and process it. There's just way too much going on down there to be able to, to keep track for, for any of us on this diet, except for maybe you, Rick, you retired like our former mayor was, so, so maybe you become our legislative advocate. But there's just so much going on, and there's so much that happens behind the scenes that we don't know about, that the sooner we can get information that allows us to do our job and engage with our elected officials, I think is, is valuable. And, and, you know, we've got this two-year contract. I would be for at least seeing out our contract through this special session and then reiterating this next year when the contract's expired before next session, but that's just, again, my opinion.
Okay, so, go ahead, Rick.
Sorry.
No, and if it sounded irritated, I wasn't, that was a, please go ahead.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not hurt. All right.
I didn't say it right.
Yes, all right. I did, Mark and I put this on the agenda, and I, I wanted us to be able to talk about this. So I did let Mark know earlier today that I, it sounds like there's a lot of information from Focus Advocacy that I've not seen. So I said, I don't think I want to vote on this at this point. That I think this would, we're not upon the end of a contract. I'd like to have a chance to look at what has been coming, maybe some stuff that I missed, or some stuff that came before I was on the council, and look at that, see how it compares to what we might be able to get elsewhere. I'm not ready to vote on this.
Okay, so, and, and just to, just to check, Martha, you had, have you received anything? Because that, that, my, I think my biggest issue right now is just, it, it sounds like there's a wealth of information. I haven't seen anything yet. And if that's just a being added to an email thing, that's great. I, I want to see that too. And so help me with this. So when it says, the hard-cost savings in fiscal year twenty-six for not renewing the Focus Advocacy contract, so it doesn't expire until next year anyway, so, so there, we would have, and Cody, did you say that you hadn't? Have you seen anything?
I'm going through my emails right now. Does it pop up under Focus Advocacy? I've received zero emails from them. And I've been on a year.
Probably stuck in the filter.
So if that's a?
I mean, I'm looking at spam, junk, all of it. I don't see anything from any.
There's multiple filters. There's the junk mail, but then there's the filters that you don't see we've got.
It's hard, it's hard to say it's worth seventy grand a year if I've never read an email from them. That's the problem.
Cody, Cody, mine was getting, I'm sorry, mine was getting hung up in the proof point emails that we get every morning with, with the, with the block spam. But just in June alone, it looks like there were seven emails that went out, and that's with session ending very early in June, so.
So four of us, though, haven't looked at it yet. Yeah, I would hate to make a decision to, before seeing all of that and seeing what, what options are available to us, and since we're in the contract anyway, I would say at this point, now that all of us know, we can make sure that we fix any kind of problems that we have with us not getting the stuff that you guys are sending, because it sounds like it's great stuff. My other thought would just be, I'd, I'd like to maybe even utilize part of that contract that we have, especially if there's a special session that pertains to anything of what we'd be doing. If Focused Advocacy will aid in any one of us prepping something, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, having, you know, prepping anything or drafting anything, that would seem to be a valuable tool that since we're already under the contract anyway, let's, let's utilize and let's see how that, that works. So that would be my thought on that. Did, Mark, did you, what, what was your, was this more of just kind of just to bring it up and, and make an awareness of it kind of thing?
Not, not to terminate immediately. I would be more than willing to go through the, you know, go through the length of the contract and go, but I did want to bring this out, because I brought it up a year ago. When we did, I know it's a two-year agreement, and it's something that we can do. I mean, like I said, I, I'm not on any of the Zoom calls. I don't know how, the time I would have to get on them, but I certainly would love to, to pop on there and get, hop on some of the Zoom calls, ask some questions. I haven't been offered to, you know, be, and this is not your fault, but, and I don't, probably not Michael's fault, probably just falling between the cracks, is to the possibility of going, you know, going down to Austin, being prepped on it to find out if it's any good. I, I know a lot of people have told me and on offices, they don't like to see lobbyists. They, they're a little bit more afraid of elected officials coming down there, because elected officials can, you know, they might be able to affect, you know, outcomes. They can hold things back. Lobbyists, unless, unless you're contributing to a campaign, it's, it's difficult to, to, like I said, they're not afraid of lobbyists, because obviously we know they are affected by, by lobbyists. I just tend to think it's bigger people that spend more money than we do on there. They, they react to money.
Well, if nothing else, putting it on the agenda did make four of us aware that there's materials out there that we can, we can start to take advantage of and see. But I am getting kind of a consensus right now that we're all kind of on a hold and not really wanting to take a specific action tonight. But, but nonetheless, I'm glad we brought it up. Sounds like we all have a better understanding, and. Sounds like we all have a better understanding and we certainly got a wealth of information presented to us earlier. So, any-
And Mayor, we'll check the spam filters tomorrow morning. We'll get that taken care of and we'll get the emails sent over and get those added. So we'll resolve tomorrow.
Perfect, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, sound good? Any other thoughts before we move on from that one? That was good. All right, what's our next agenda item, please?
Next, we will move to Agenda Item 6E. Discuss, consider and take any necessary action regarding public meeting procedures and rules of procedure for public comment.
Okay. And Mark, do you wanna talk about this one as well?
Absolutely. This is something, I mean, I think a lot of people have probably seen me and been annoyed by me up at that podium for many, many years. I know when I did work in Addison, it was very, very difficult for me to get to meetings. I would have to go leave early, I was subject to traffic. I think a lot of people in FATE are in that same, that same boat that don't work at home like I do. I'm lucky to be able to work from home right now and they can't make it to meetings. There were even cases where there were issues on sex offenders, zoning, all kinds of things where you did your best to get here and you made it here by 5:45 only to be told, and I'm told this is not proper and this never should have been done, that if you didn't have your paperwork in by like 5:45, you weren't gonna go speak. That's, I don't believe that's legal and it's not right. But I do believe we need to put options in for people to comment and put their, their two cents on, on agenda items from other sources, including perhaps online, setting a form up that they can fill out online, dropping a form off in a, in a box. I know a lot of people are gonna go, well, that just leads to developers and a bunch of people stacking it. They could do that here now. They could drop off a bunch of forms at six o'clock. We don't know. We're not verifying addresses and whether or not somebody's really using the correct name or the correct address. But I want, I, I think we need more input from citizens than less. The vast, vast majority of the people in the city of FATE make their livings outside of FATE and bring their money in. I think their, their voices are as valuable as mine. To me, I'd like to hear it more. I don't care to hear myself most of the time. But we wanna figure out what that other 27,000 people have to say and how they feel on things. If they're for something or against something, I do think those, as opposed to being comments, I think they should be able to go, we should be able to hear them just as much as if they dropped a form off and didn't wanna speak. And pretty much an online portal, I think, would be a good idea. I've heard that suggestion from a lot of people that you can't make it to council meetings. I mean, several of them are disabled. They can't make it, it's very difficult for them. And, and also maybe a comments, to drop one of the comment forums in the, in one of the boxes and have them, we can go over them. Jane Doe, John, you know, John Doe here against item, you know, 6B on this. And I think it would get a little bit more engagement. Some people have, I've, I've heard people say, well, it will make people lazy and not show up at council meetings. If you're passionate, you're passionate. You'll come, you'll come. But it'll give us a little bit more options for people to come, to come testify. I think it's something we really, really should look at.
Any thoughts or comments on that, Martha?
If, if this is a change we make, I'm, I'm all for more information, more feedback from people. I think that's very important, but if we go down this road, can we go back? If it, if it proves to be non-productive or we suspect that there's invalid information or any of the things that you mentioned could be possible, we can change direction and go back to people appearing in person?
I guess you would say, for example, if, you know, 30 people submitted a form online and, and they ended up being fake people or that sort of thing, would that be just, I, I don't know what that process would look like. Would that be something that you guys would have to independently verify? How would that be? Or, or do you have to read it because it was submitted and, and take somebody's word for it? What, what's the process there?
If a form is submitted outside of a meeting, we don't have to read or even give statistics during the meeting that, that the form was submitted. If we used an online form, we would definitely want to just make sure that the council immediately receives that form in real time. So as someone submits a form, you guys would be notified immediately. Now, if it's the council's will that you wanted us to provide, you know, some sort of like, as of 5:00 PM, we received, you know, six forms in opposition to or in support of, you know, that's, that's certainly the will of the council and we would be able to do that. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
And so, just to clarify, the council has adopted public meeting procedures and so if, if that was the will of the council, we'd have to modify by resolution, you know, as council meeting procedures to allow for this process. And, and we can do that. And then to answer your question, Councilmember Huffman, if at some point council decided that was not working for whatever reason, you could again modify your procedural rules to take that away.
Would you, would it be, in, as far as the procedures go, if we were to open up something online so that if somebody, and, and not necessarily, at this point, I'm, I'm not necessarily thinking of it as, as something to be read at the meeting, but just a, a way for citizens to communicate with city council members without necessarily going to FATE, the, the city website and then clicking on city government and then clicking on each of us individually where our name is kinda highlighted, where it's our email address. If there was just a standard form and that just sent us, would that constitute, would that alone constitute a change to the way we do our meetings or could we do that out, without having to have a resolution?
Especially if you're wanting to somehow acknowledge those as being, affecting your council items.
Okay.
And cities do do a variety of things and, and, and I'm not very technical, so I'm not, I'll let Vicky speak to what can be done electronically and IT-wise, but, you know, some cities have a rule that an email received, and usually they try to designate a certain email address, so it's real clear that the email is coming regarding a council agenda item. So it's not just a email to all seven of you individually. It's a special kind of email. And they'll maybe have a rule that says, if, if it's received, you know, four hours before the council meeting, the city secretary will make sure the council member receives it and it can be part of the official record. You know, they'll have rules like that so that it's not a situation where she's having to sit at a meeting in, in the middle of the meeting like, oh my gosh, there's emails coming in and, you know. She's not having to deal with that. So a lot of cities do that kind of timeframe. And, and so to answer your question, that would need, that, that would need a procedural rule change.
Okay. Looks like we have, well, I just, just to follow the, follow the procedures, Scotty, come on.
So, Scott, go ahead. So as it relates to the general concept of gaining more information from citizens, I love the idea. As far as the way we do change address of public comments at a council meeting, I, I think the way we do pub, public comments is okay. If we wanted to create a, a chat box or, or something on the website that would allow people to provide feedback that they can share directly with us, I, I, I think it's a great idea. But, but in terms of letting people email comments in to be read as a part of public comments before council meetings and things like that, I, I, I think we might be getting stuck on the concept that the only way people have to provide feedback is to stand at the podium and, and give us their thoughts. There, there are so many ways to provide feedback that, that people take care of or, or take part in when, when there're big items going on. We've all gotten multiple emails as it relates to PIDS going on. It's not even on the agenda now. So, so we've got email addresses, we've got phone numbers, and I'd be for putting our cell phone numbers on the website so people know how to reach us. But there, there are so many more ways than just standing at the podium to, to get feedback that, that if anything, it's probably more imperative on us as council to, to do more things like town halls and things like that because not all of us have, have done town halls. Not all of us make ourselves available i- in every way possible. And that's okay. We, we all handle our stuff differently. But it, it's imperative to us as council people to make ourselves available to get that feedback in, in ways beyond requiring our citizens to come stand at the podium and, and make themselves available to the public. So, so I, I'm all for anything that allows us to get more and more information, but not necessarily changing the way, you know, if we get 20 comments in, in through that box, I don't want Vicky to have to read through those public comments for, for each of those items. That, that's just a time waste for everybody. There's, there's so, i- i- it's the opportunity for us to get information. It's the public comments, the people standing on the podium isn't a, a public vote in support of or against something. It's people sharing their personal opinions on what they, what they think. And there's so many ways to do that, that we, we need to do a better job of engaging the public to, to make those other ways. Make sure people understand all those ways. Having, I, I put just as much value on the conversations I have at the grocery store and a local restaurant as I do anybody that sits up here and, and says whatever. So I understand we start our meetings at six o'clock and, and it's hard for people to get here. But, but with, with the way technology is today, I, I just think there's so many more effective ways to, to do that other than changing our public comment procedures. The only, the only suggestion I would make on our public comment procedures is anybody that stands up to the podium and makes comments should be a resident of the city of FATE. So that, that would be my two cents.
Okay. Mr., uh, I'm gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to everybody, just wanna make sure. Mr. Harper?
Yeah, I would, again, I'm, like Scott, I'm, I'm for getting feedback from, from people, absolutely. We've, we've had several town halls where people come. But having, again, having Vicky read those comments in a meeting, I think would be counterproductive. I've, I've gotten before on different items, I've gotten, you know, 10, 15, even 20 emails with just copy and paste of the same email over and over and over again. And, you know, if you spend that reading the same email over and over again, you know, that's sorta not a, a good, good use of the time. I do enjoy getting information from the public. I, I read every comment that I get. I try to respond to every comment that I get, whether that be email, call, in the grocery store, like Scott said. You know, I do hope people come to the council meeting and if we had a way for them to drop it off, I mean, I know we have a way to do that with, with zoning. We have ways that people can sit it in, they'll tell you how many people came, for and against. But, you know, as far as reading, e- even when I was speaking here before I was on the council, I tried to do things to cut down on the amount of time that it took for the meetings, basically standing and speaking if I was for or against something and, and naming off other people that were for or against as well. So that's just, that's my feedback.
Okay.
What I was gonna say is, Scott, I'm, I'm really talking, those are really two different processes. I'm not, I wouldn't wanna cut off emails that people sent to us. I'm literally talking, and I'm not even necessarily saying that every comment that comes in has to be read, but when comments or people don't wanna speak, there is a section on there that says, "I'm for this, I'm against this, and I choose not to speak." During the meeting, I think, and I, maybe I didn't make this clear enough or may not have even mentioned it, but as soon as the agenda item is posted, I think people should have the ability to drop off a form as opposed to just doing it during the meeting, saying, "I'm for this or against this." They can do it if they show up and they, and they leave, I think that same option should come up and we can say, you know, Joe Schmo is for this, we got five people for this. I, I think it's important to know during the meeting if people are for this against us. I mean, it's whether or not we listen to them or not, that's up to everybody up at the, up here. But them being able to speak and let us know in advance, I think is, is, is very, very important. And this is off of my experience, off of the last five or six plus years of going up and speaking. And also being on that other end of Dallas where you can't make a meeting. Or if you do, you're barely getting there. I think, dare I say it, I think we've been at times pretty dang horrible about making it open for people to come speak at, at these meetings. It really, it really, really has. And I think, I think we need to do better. We do need to do more town halls. That's gonna be something I'm gonna bring up before too long, to make it actually easier to use city buildings for, you know, for non-political and community engagement and, and dialogue. That I think is very, very important. I'd like to, there's a lot of ideas I've got on that that'll be on, that I'll be mentioning at future meetings. I think we need more of these ideas. Not just this one, not stopping here, not just emails. I'm an all of the above. I think all of the above is, is actually good. I'm, I don't care about my time up here. If I have to sit up here till midnight, if, if people are telling us how they feel on a particular agenda item, that's what I was friggin' elected to do, excuse my language. If we don't, you know, if we're worried about time factors here, then what the heck are we doing? But I, I'm not saying we need to read every one of their comments into the record. I'm saying whether or not they're for it or against it. If they want their name read out, we can read their name out. If we don't, if they don't, and we just have a list of yays and nays, that's fine. I think that's important to go on the record. So also people in the city of FATE can also figure out, do, do they, does their opinion match, you know, the amount of people that are, that are actually going on the record? But I think more information is always better than less. More speech is always better than less, even if we sometimes don't like that speech. But I think we need a, a much more open process. I'd like the timeframe to be, as soon as the agenda item's posted, then we accept, hey, I'm John Doe and I'm against item 6A on this. And, and, and let them know. Yes, I know that people send out, you know, repetitive emails. We've, we've seen them, especially recently. But whether or not we like those or not, those are freedom of speech. And they may be a person, one person that's kind of helping, telling people to do an email campaign. That's still freedom of speech. That person is still voluntarily forwarding that email on there. It's, should, not necessarily, you know, one party sending them all out. It's, they're telling you how they feel, they just don't know how to compose or don't wanna compose the email. But I want more engagement and I, I'm not gonna say I don't care how I get it, but I, all of the above. I like talking to people at fresh. I like talking to people when I'm walking my dog and hearing what they think on a topic. Boy, and boy are people opinionated on it. But, but that's, that's my opinion on it. I, I just think that this is something that's long overdue and we need to open up and, and go do this. I'm not trying to add to Vicky's workload over there, but it, it, to me, it's not any different than 15 people showing up and saying, "I don't wanna speak, but I wanna drop this form off and put my opposition or my support of this, this agenda item on the record."
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Cody?
I think that it's a good point that, you know, for a long time, we've had different community members that have felt kinda shut out of the process. And I think that it's a, a nice idea to make it easier for council to get feedback from the community. I do think that it would be problematic for multiple reasons for us to read every single comment, but I don't take issue with them stating for the record or having Vicky state for the record that there were this many yays, this many nays, whatever the case may be. But I did wanna bring up that the city of Austin, they have a message board that they use and it is within Toma. I actually looked this up whenever I was going through Toma training during TML. They have a message board with the city of Austin where residents can get on there and they can chat back and forth, not just with their council, but even with, you know, the city manager or whatever. But they're able to get that real feedback immediately. I don't have any clue how hard it is to create a message board. Obviously, I feel very bad for you, sir, cause I think that's probably your job. But I'm just throwing it out there that they have these platforms that are available and that might be a solution to where we, we can get feedback from the public and it doesn't violate Toma. Everybody gets to see it at the same time and, you know. Anyways, just a thought.
No, thank you, Cody. So here's, here's what I'm getting and, and probably through the course of, of listening to everybody. We all like speech, we all value the engagement from the community and we all wanna figure out a way to, to bring more of that to the table. And so I think overall, the consensus from every member of this council is, how do we do that? The question, I think, and, and maybe where some of the confusion we got to from the beginning is the agenda item specifically mentions public comments. And I know that, and I just wanna make sure for, just so that we're clear, public hearings, like if we did a zoning change request and, and specifically expressing that support or opposition to. I do think that not only, public comments are already kind of difficult because a lot of times people don't know that they can just come and say something at a council meeting, but public hearing and, and comments on that can be even more potentially prob- but public hearing and and comments on that can be even more potentially problematic because you don't know how or when to express that support. So uh whether it's a, whether it's message boards or whether it's a a form online, I think there are ways that we can absolutely incorporate ways to, if we are talking specifically about the hearing section, which would be per agenda item, that we could find a way to uh gauge from the community. Hey, I can't make it, but I wanna make sure, and I'm not within the two, uh, what is it, two hundred feet? Uh, I'm not within the two hundred feet, but I definitely have an opinion here. Uh, I definitely think we can make sure that we are at least at least extending a hand to the people and saying, hey, we want your input, whether they choose to take advantage of that or not, I think we have that opportunity. But specifically for the public comment section, I just wanna make sure, because from my understanding with with the way public comment works is it's not necessarily, if somebody were to come and say, I support something that's an agenda item, or even I wanna speak out against something that's an agenda item, they have to wait until we talk about that agenda item, is that?
If there is a public hearing.
If if there's a public hearing for it, is that correct?
If if there is a public hearing, we like to have all of the public hearing comments cohesive for the record, so those are held and heard during that specific uh discussion for that public hearing item.
But if there were, and that's why I was asking a second ago, if there were any individuals who wanted to make just a public comment, anything about fate that they want to come and address, if they can't make it to the meeting, we could also. Um, I guess what I'm asking is almost like we could have two forms, here's something super specific that would be on the agenda item, here's for the general public comments, and then whether they're sent to us via email, whether they're sent to the city manager to kind of look through. And however that happens, we could do that. And I and I'm, as I'm looking at, I'm I'm writing down what everybody on here is saying, uh, you know, we want speech, we want more engagement. We recognize that that, uh, oh, we like citizen input, whether we're at the grocery store, at the city council meetings. Let's get all of that engagement, though, and then maybe we s- maybe we look at that for six months. I don't I don't know if that's too long, and some of you are going, six months, you know, I don't know what the length of time is. But then we address that and we say like, hey, here are a bunch of people who, you know, whatever the case may be. But in interim, we can open up more opportunities for that engagement and that feedback without it necessarily immediately having to go to a procedural change. Because why would, I'm just curious, why would that have to be a procedural change unless we were saying, well, no, we are going to read it out? Which, if that's what we wanna do, I'm fine with, but but essentially, couldn't we roll out the form that somebody could fill out online as soon as it took to create it?
So the rules are specific as to public comment at at open meetings, the rules y'all have, and it limits it to people unable to stay at the meeting uh can fill out a written statement. And so if y'all wanted to have, and certainly staff can draft something and bring it back. I'm not, I'm not saying, no, we can't, I'm just saying, as far as needing a procedural change, um, we certainly could work on something um regarding agenda items where we could have some kind of where they could say they're for or against, I assume we could do that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm talking, I was talking practically.
Right, no, of course, of course.
Yeah. Um, you know, and and so just to clarify, were y'all also wanting the ability to have people speak about non-agenda items?
Uh, to me, when I when I see under the agenda items for our our staff summary, when it says discuss, consider, and take any necessary action concerning public meeting procedures, rules of procedure for public comments, I read that as the public comment section of the agenda where somebody could come talk about anything. I just don't know as a council where we wanna be, because if I stop, if somebody stops me at the grocery store, they're not asking me, they're not saying, hey, will you bring this up at the next meeting? I want this to be heard at the next meeting. That's typically just a, I want to get my my information out there. So if there are citizens that would benefit, almost like it's a, it's a chance encounter at the grocery store, except I didn't say at the grocery store, I just went online, hey, I had a thought, I I filled it out and I sent it to you. That will boost engagement, but it doesn't necessarily have to tie immediately to a meeting.
Right, right, so I think what I hear you saying, and and you, please, please, what I hear you saying is that um, some some method for staff so that um that isn't part of the a meeting where where residents can bring up um uh items that are not on the agenda so that there's some way for them to gauge on that without having to come speak, I think is what I hear you saying. And that would not take a procedural, that would not take a procedural change at all. If for, if y'all wanted some kind of notation on fours and against um on agenda items, that would take a procedural change and and we could do that. Um, and staff could work on that if that's something that y'all wanted.
Okay.
I I hate to get out of line and try and interpret anything going on in um Councilman Hattley's mind as he put this on the agenda. But but I think specifically what he's more concerned about is people putting comments in place as it relates items that are gonna have a public hearing related to a certain item. Um, because that's where we're gonna get the feedback from. So so um I I I think that's specifically what it is he's trying to get at.
Yep, uh, it's largely agenda item specific. I'm not opposed to putting something in there where if they want to put something very brief in the public comment. I mean, you can always do a character limit, you know, cuz we have a two minute, three minute limit up here. Uh, you're going through a character limit, but it it, that's not time sensitive. Public, necessarily, public comments, I mean, it can be, it just depends on what it is, but those are obviously things that are not on the agenda. But largely, I was targeting, uh, you know, ag- agenda items that are coming up, that people don't know, they'll look at Thursday and go, wow, this is coming up, uh, I'm gonna be out of town, or I can't drive in from work. I really would like to let the council know that I'm for this or against this. So uh the ability to, once the agenda item is posted, at that point, to fill out a form online or drop one off in a drop box, fill it out, say, I'm so and so, this is the address that I have, this is my phone number, email address, whatever, I am, you know, and uh and post whether or not they're for an item or against an item.
And to make sure I'm clear, are you are or are not wanting that read? And I just say that because I know you had said you're not necessarily for that.
It it would be nice, but i- if, I mean, if it's gonna be a deal breaker, I'd rather, I'd obviously rather have something, a yes or a no than than nothing uh on that, uh, for them to be able to get on the record. Uh, now, obviously, there's there's time limits, we don't wanna give, you know, somebody, you know, you know, five paragraphs to go do this, and when people are allowed three minutes up here. I do know McClanahan Chisholm uh d- does read them into the record, but uh, like I said, I'll I'll leave that to to the council uh on on what y'all will do. But obviously, it's, to me, it's, the deal that I want most is to find out if people are for an item or against an item that's coming up, and they just can't make the meeting uh for for whatever reason.
Right, okay, I I hadn't actually said anything yet, but um I guess what what I'm, I would feel on something like this is that we're, we don't seem to have a huge number of people on most occasions turn up. It has to be something pretty.
Our one or two a year.
Hot topic. Uh, well, I know they're, they'll come, they'll come. But like tonight, we had a pretty lengthy agenda with some big items in my mind, big dollar amounts, and there was no one here for public comment. And um so, I think, uh, to maybe try this on a trial basis. And I I think, I don't know that I would wanna see everything read, uh, even if someone writes, you know, three hundred characters or three minutes worth. I think if it just, if they indicate for or against or undecided, just a a quick tally of that. Okay, so would would everybody be open to, in terms of of directing staff, directing them to create something where people could indicate if they're for or against on a specific agenda item, but at this time, we're not talking about reading it into the official meeting? And and ma- again, using six months again, if we look in six months, we're like, man, look at all these people, we can come back to it. But at the very least, we're building something where we can definitively say, and I know we would need a resolution to change the way our meetings work, but we can definitively say, here are the people for and here are the people against?
Right, and I just wanna weigh in on on some of this stuff. This is a fundamental change in how, I mean, it doesn't sound like it, but it's a fundamental change in how the council may operate. So if you can just imagine, let's say, uh, let's say we've got a, the soccer field, so we have a soccer field, we have the football players versus the soccer players. And so now we're gonna get either online forums or different ways. We're gonna have folks essentially, like in one column, you're gonna have the the twenty soccer players saying, hey, we're we're for the soccer field, and then we're gonna have the, you know, ten or so football players saying we're against the soccer field. So as those, those are presented to you, then you're gonna vote. And so you're having, you're having these tallies, almost like a citizen. I don't want it to be like a scorecard for you, that puts you in an awkward position, but it's gonna be weird. I mean, I just wanna let you know, like, it sounds good, but it could maybe not work so well. So I just wanted to caution you about that. It also kinda dilutes uh some of the voice of your staff, which is what we're, you know, we're pros to give you advice on these things. So just just be aware of that, that it it could make you, it could make you look, um, let's say you've got thirty people are against a certain thing, they're putting pressure on you, you've got an email campaign on you. And so now you've got all these things, and I see our our state representatives, local staffer in the audience, so, hello, Mr. Dooley. Um, so just just be aware that it could, it could alter uncon- uncon- unconsciously what may be happening, and there's a exceptional chances to game the system.
You, and just specifically, you're saying somebody could, uh, just have a an easy campaign to say, here, copy and paste this into that form, and next thing you know, we have a hundred, but there's not necessarily any actual engagement there, is it manufactured engagement?
It's, it would be real engagement, but it's just, it's, it's not rep- all the input you're getting is not representative of the actual public. So the rep, I mean, the representation of the public is you, like, you all are the public's representatives, representatives.
Mr. Harper?
Yeah, the other thing that I would uh would say is, these people are turning in these forms before they've even had a chance to hear the discussion around what's actually being discussed. So they're, they're making a decision if they're for or against something without any, but maybe without all the facts. So we, you know, there there could be someone that could have changed their mind about something once they were listening to the meeting and said, oh, man, I I really wish I'd have voted for the soccer instead of the football. But because we took their form upfront and they weren't here to change their mind, now they've made their mind up again before we've had any discussion, any information or anything on an agenda item. For example, this thing tonight with the legislative, um, you know, you see this on the agenda, you think, oh, I don't wanna spend money. But then the gentleman spoke for thirty minutes on the value of spending the money. We might have had fifty forms saying, I don't want that. And without any, yeah, we have no way of gauging, or they have no way of even knowing what the the thing was about except for it said, we're gonna spend, you know, we're gonna save seventeen thousand dollars, so.
Uh, that's not any different than dropping off a form and leaving now, uh, if they did that. And that's not any different from when, Mark, you and I used to come in here and testify, and we would bring people in. Uh, they could have changed their minds and they uh would go stand behind us, or or not stand behind us. They could have come in and say, so and so's going to go speak for me. That's not anything that's any different. Uh, they drop forms off and leave now. Uh, I know people, what it sounds to me, and I and I certainly hope I'm wrong on this, I really do, is we're afraid of public engagement. It's, it really does.
It it's, that's the worst thing you could say to any elected official.
And that's what I just said, it's it's. I was gonna say, I say, I hope I'm wrong.
No, no, I stop right there, because because I can speak for multiple members of people previous on this. And I'm not defending any previous council member on any vote, but to say we're afraid of public engagement is.
I said, I hope, but you're not.
No, it's incendiary to even imply it. And 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 it is a, it's like me saying, I'm not, no, it it, that's a ridiculous comment, I'm sorry. It it, I can speak for myself, that I've held multiple town halls since I've been in office and before office to get feedback. I make myself available to the public at every opportunity. For you to say, it sounds like we're afraid of public engagement, is just wrong.
I said, I was afraid of.
What we're afraid of is getting ballot boxes stuffed and people um collecting information and just stuffing it for other people. There's ways that system can be gamed. I'm not saying we don't want public engagement, I will never say we don't want. I look for every opportunity to engage with the public as possible. For you to say we're afraid of it is just downright.
I said, I was afraid you're saying that, that I hope I'm, I hope I'm not hearing that, but. Well, guess what, it's it's, I think we need more information in discerning, if you if you wanna push it aside.
I'm not disagreeing on more information.
Okay, hold on, if you wanna push it off to the side and then and then not take it in, and you don't, you don't wanna consider it, that's your, that's your call as a councilman, that's absolutely your call as a councilman.
Gentlemen, I think that, I think that it has been made abundantly clear that everybody wants the engagement. I think the the specific discussion right now is how best to use that engagement and how best to get the feedback from the citizens. I would prefer our conversation not uh devolve into who is the bigger, uh, who's held more town halls or who cares more about speaking to the people or anything like that. Uh, so I am going to, Ms. Upman, did you want to speak? I I do want to make sure that we're hearing everybody's.
Well, I thought it was ironic that, well, one of my items for my closing comments was gonna be um how much I appreciate communication from people, and I wanted to encourage people to do that more, whether that's by email or coming to meetings or something. I mean, I had notes about this at the beginning of the meeting, so, I mean, it's, it's all very valuable. And it ultimately, even if we opened it up for people to to provide information in written form, it may not end up being that much more information. And that's one of the reasons why I asked if it's something that we could reverse in the long run, because, I mean, I'm all for, I'm for giving it a try and seeing how successful it is to get legitimate information from people, their comments, their feelings about what's going on. Um, and then if it turns out to be something that's really not valuable, because it's, I mean, AI bots or something like that, we could stop it and um and encourage people to show up in person.
So is there a way we can, we can, uh, a- again, just to, just to to Martha's point, is there a way there could almost be something that's tried in a in a beta style version that would not require the resolution, because maybe for the first six meetings, we don't read anything, we don't even necessarily acknowledge it, but we know it's happening. And then we can gauge if this is a great way, and and none of us realized how monumental it would be in terms of getting that feedback, we can actually have the change to our procedure. And if we're looking at it going, yeah, it's a good thing we didn't implement this, because now we'd have to be looking at it, taking it away. We ju- we didn't, we didn't, um, uh, we didn't change our meeting parameters to to then have to to change it back.
So, um, we certainly, um, if you were wanting um Vicky to read out the fours or against uh at the council meeting, cer- that would take a, that would take a procedural change, we could set an expiration date on it so that it goes away without y'all taking further action, um, we certainly could do that.
Well, even before that, even if we're looking at baby steps at this point, could we do something where it's like, well, we're not, none of us, and I'm not speaking for everybody here, I'm just saying, if all of us were to say, none of us are even asking at this point to have it officially read, we just would like one more channel of communication for the people to be able to speak on, uh, to to be able to let us know how they feel on it, and then we could come back in three months.
The more person who's more IT oriented, Vicky, talk.
So if I created an online form so that we could just call it um a council meeting comment form, let's just say that. And it's, if they could vote tonight for me to create that form, could they do that by minute order? And then just, and say in that, in the, I'm sorry, I'm stumbling here, but could they say, we wanna try this for a trial period, do that by minute order, we could create the online form, I could make it active tomorrow, and we could test it out for however long they say in their motion.
And you're saying nothing gets read or acknowledged at the council meeting?
Correct, we're just, we're just seeing if this is, if this, I mean, that's what I'm understanding, is is as a trial method to see if it really works.
That's my thought, because it seems like the the big hiccup here is, is it going to work or not? Not that we don't wanna hear from anybody, both gentlemen want to hear from everybody, but we just have no idea if it's gonna work. And I think the 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 fear, as Martha kinda pointed out, or, you know, fear hesitation, is what happens if it's some, what happens if it's not good, then we're kinda stuck with it, then we have to repeal it. If we just go to to kinda test it out, reserved for now, we can see if it's great. And then we, when that conversation gets here, we don't have to speculate on if it's gonna be good or bad.
Then we could bring back a permanent change to the procedures.
I think that's fine, um, I guess I was getting stuck on the reading of the fours or against, but if that's not what you're doing, I think a trial runs great.
Okay, Zer, Cody, go ahead.
I was gonna comment that it would probably be like a good idea for the form, it just automatically got forwarded to us. They can say whatever they want, write for or against, their comments, whatever it may be, just, you know, council complaint hotline type of deal. Um, or whatever praises if they're, whatever.
Yes, and you and you would receive those in real time, so if they send them in the middle of an item, you know, you're gonna get them in, you know.
Sure, no, I think that that, I think that that's a good idea, that way we're, we're getting everyone's feedback that wants to get it. But not necessarily, we're reading it at a meeting and we're having to decide if they're a real person, if it's copy and pasted. We'll get it ahead of time, and I think, I think everyone on council can be trusted to. And I think, I think everyone on council can be trusted to read the public's comments and hear from the professionals that work for city staff and decide what is best. I mean, that's what we're elected to do. So I'm, I think that that's fair from both angles.
Okay, other thoughts on that? Martha, what do you think about that? Putting you on the spot.
I like the idea. We're moving in that direction. If it's successful, we make a change to the procedures.
Mark, do you feel like that gave you, because I, I understand where you're coming from and I want to honor that point. Do you feel, and, and I know this is probably a little bit more baby step than you were hoping for, but, but, you know, are you agreeable to like a baby step here to see, we can come back and, we can assess in a number of weeks?
If it moves in the right direction, sure.
Okay.
I'm willing to try it out.
Okay. So, uh, as far as a motion goes for that, uh, do I, yeah, just-
I'm sorry.
Well, she, she mentioned needing a motion to create the form.
If we're all in consensus that we're going to create an online forum, I don't think that we def- we don't need a, a formal motion.
Okay.
Yeah. If, if everyone is okay with that, if you're not, then we would need a motion if somebody is opposed to it.
Is anybody opposed to that idea? Okay. Whoo. Okay. What's our next item, please?
Next will be agenda item seven, mayor, council and city manager reports.
All right. Martha, you want to start us off?
I will just continue with my thought that I, I want to encourage people to communicate with us whenever they can. Watch the online meetings, pay attention to what's going on, uh, submit your information to us individually and hopefully in not too long, uh, on a, a form that's created by the city. So we, we get input from people. I, I appreciate people showing up at the meetings or submitting information however they can.
All right, Mr. Hatley?
Uh, I just want to say, as I always do, thank you to the DPS and thank you to city staff, uh, for everything you do. Thank you, Vicky, for, uh, working on this, uh, this, uh, this online forum. And I'd like to say thank you to the council for listening. We had a spirited debate. Hopefully nobody took anything, I really didn't mean anything to come personally. But I'm very, very passionate about, uh, open dialogue and even stuff that we don't like. Lord knows I've had to hear things from that podium and, uh, a lot of things from, uh, social media that I don't like, but you know what? I will fight to the death in order for people to be able to say it, uh, on there. I want to hear more rather than less, uh, even if it's junk, uh, I just really would. But, uh, thank you and-
All right, thank you. Rick?
I'm gonna keep mine short. I, uh, do thank you for the DPS, especially for being here, keeping an eye, watching over us. Thank you. And, uh, I want to put out, uh, kudos to Vicky, who I look at what we get in these agenda packages. I know there's people that put that to contribute those things, but I know there's a lot of work behind the scenes. And on top of that, I got this today, so.
There's a win we've-
There's a win. Thank you, Vicky.
All right, Mr. Kelly?
Um, had the pleasure of spending a lot of time Friday evening, Saturday morning, Saturday evening downtown. And it was really cool to see a lot of people downtown, both for Friday night with various restaurants and, um, coffee shops and beer houses being open and people hanging out outside and kids dancing outside, um, Saturday morning at the, at the Artisan's Market, is that what it's, what do we call it? Farmer's Market, Artisan? Fate Station Park, um, at, at the, at the market down there. I spent about an hour down there and saw if a couple hundred people came through, I probably saw 150 of them. It was a lot of kids, a lot of dogs, um, just a lot of people. A, a, and then leaving at about 11, actually about 10:45 in the morning, um, seeing all the people along Main Street, um, just walking and then walking by the food hall and seeing about 45 people in line at our top 50 barbecue place in town and just seeing the line there and the publicity that they're getting. Earlier in the week, I had the pleasure of eating at one of the top 10 barbecue places in the state and the food doesn't compare to what we've got locally. So, um, just to see all the activity and support for our local businesses downtown was, was awesome to see. And thanks for, to city staff, all staff for all the work you guys do.
Mr. Harper?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, happy Father's Day to all those, uh, that celebrated Father's Day yesterday, those who are fathers or becoming fathers soon. Also welcome the new officers. I think we have four, if I, if I read correctly, they're just starting. Welcome those folks to the city of Fate. Looking forward to, to having you on staff, keeping us safe. And, uh, as Scott said, keep continuing to shop local and, uh, you know, let's spend all the money we can here in Fate.
Ms. Chen?
Well, after that very spirited debate, I think I'm gonna take Andrew up on his suggestion and be the comic relief, and I have a joke.
Ah, there we go.
What is Mario and Luigi's favorite thing to wear? Denim, denim, denim. And that's all I got. Y'all have a great night.
Oh, there we go. All right, so, um, yeah, I can't believe I have to follow that. Okay. No, I'm kidding. Thank you, Cody. Uh, so I, I would like to say, uh, recently, and especially since it's been summer, I live, uh, very close to the downtown area. And I want to say that, uh, it's, it's one thing when you kind of see things that are growing in the downtown area and you get excited about it, but it's another thing when you actually see on the city side, the city staff that have been instrumental in making all of those pieces kind of come together. Everything that, that might seem like abstract or unrelated agenda items really are part of a really cohesive, uh, project to make downtown something wonderful. And I think we're getting there and I think that's awesome. So thank you for that echoing, kind of the shopping local, going down there. We've got a couple of ribbon cuttings that'll be downtown. I think at the end of next week, Beer Me and, oh gosh, what's it, uh, the, the Domino's, right? And so, you know, getting, getting people out there, uh, being part of that just creates a hype about it and that's good. We want people to start seeing how awesome, uh, we are here in Fate and what we're really growing down there. We, you, you hear a lot of people talk about wanting our own identity and we're in the process of creating it. So I would say to everybody, don't just wait for it to be built, be a part of that process as it's coming to our great city. So with that, Mr. Kovacs, what do you got for us?
Just one item, sir. Next week, on the 23rd, we have our next budget workshop.
All right.
Should be a good one.
Sounds good. Thank you. Uh, okay, what's our next agenda item, please?
Okay, next is agenda item eight, executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, section 551.001, the city council will recess into exec- executive session, closed meeting to discuss the following. Eight, in accordance with Texas Government Code, section 551.087, to discuss or deliberate regarding economic development negotiations.
We're going to reconvene back into regular session. Next.
Okay. No items will...no action will be taken on. Items discussed in executive session, so the next item is 10 adjournment.
All right, do you have a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, we can begin.
You can end it. I'll just then...
He's in there getting more food.
That's fine. The minutes will reflect that he didn't come out.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Six. We'll...yeah, Rick wanted it to end, he told me. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.